All right, we're on the air.
All right. Call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting slash hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting hearing dates on the municipal Bollington Board and website, and by sending a copy to the Accra Sentinel and Courier News newspapers, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Standard board procedures. Any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure is the intention of the zoning board of adjustment not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM at any regular or special reading slash hearing of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting slash hearing to a later specified cutoff time. Electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute their cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. Pledge of allegiance. John, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call.
Mr. Aronio.
Here.
Ms. Brennan.
Here.
Mr. Giannakis.
Here.
Mr. Flatlin.
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg.
Here.
Mr. Watts is excused this evening. Ms. Collins.
Here.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf.
Here.
Chairman Gurek.
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. And I see our experts are here, and our attorney is present. Very good. All right, now, the meeting minutes are not ready, right?
Correct.
Okay. But we do have a resolution.
Correct.
It gets really tricky.
Okay, we have the resolution of zoning board of adjustment Towne, Long Hill, Morris County, New Jersey, Milton and Laudania Duarte, D-U-A-R-T-E, 424 Elm Street, Sterling, New Jersey, Block 13003, Lot 18. Application number 23-16Z. The hearing date was February 6th, the board action was February 6th, and the memorialization is going to be today. Did everybody have a chance to look over the resolution?
My goodness, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna recuse myself, I'm gonna step out while you guys take care of this. I recuse myself from this application, I'm gonna...
Oh, you don't have to step out, just don't vote.
I'll step out.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. Okay, are there any other comments on this resolution? All right, hearing none. Do I hear a motion to approve this resolution as presented?
So moved.
Okay.
Should I take this?
Yeah.
And who was the second? John.
John.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yeah.
All right, so Ms. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mr. Watts is absent tonight, and Ms. Crawford Collins?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, motion carries.
All right, thank you. You want to tell Jerr, you can come back?
You're free, Jeff.
You didn't have to leave. All right, I'm gonna wait for you to come back. Now, our application in front of us is a use variance, Block 14010, Lot 63, Zone C for Conservation, located at 1050 Long Hill Road, application number 23-14Z, missionary servants of the Most Holy Trinity. The applicant proposes to construct a columbarium to be located on the westerly side of the property, north of the existing parking lot. Are the applicants here and ready? Would you like to come up to the table? Do we, can we put a microphone there?
There was one there.
Ain't there now?
Did somebody, somebody pull back to the dais?
I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, I think, I'm sorry, Mr. Flatlin and Ms. Collins.
What about the one right behind the young lady?
Okay, good. All right. Would you go over the legalities of this?
I have reviewed the notice, it is satisfactory, the board has jurisdiction to proceed with this application.
Good, okay. Terrific, we've got the approval. Would you like to introduce yourself and your client?
Sure, if you mind if I stand?
You can stand.
Okay. My name's Amanda Wolf from the firm of Post Pollock, I'm covering for Fred Zelli, if you saw him on the application, that's why.
Okay.
Tonight I have with me Father Molina and Mr. Moschella, who are gonna tell you about this columbarium that we are presenting. If you haven't heard of columbarium...
Microphone, sorry.
Yeah, microphone. You can sit down, you don't need to stand, you can sit.
So if you were like me, who are wondering what is a columbarium? And it is basically a wall or structure that's designed to hold ashes. So when folks intern ashes, they go into the columbarium.
Could you move that over to there at an angle so we can see it and the audience can see it? Because some people on board here can't see it over there. Right, right there, there's, right there is, no, actually, that way a little bit, that way a little bit. All right, that's an angle toward us. No, yeah, that's good, yeah. And if the audience wants to see it, they can swing around. That's great, can everybody see it?
Yes.
Okay, good, that's good.
Little higher.
A little to the left now. All right, go ahead.
Perfect, thank you. So what you're looking at is actually the columbarium. Those walls on the side are what constitutes the columbarium. So it's a weird word, but that's what it is. And basically, I just wanted to tell you, the property is located at 1050 Long Hill Road, as you know, we're in the C conservation zone where churches are not a permitted use. So we are seeking preliminary and final site plan approval, as well as a D2 variance. The board, we were previously before the board in 2002 and 2019.
Yes.
And the board did consider our use to be inherently beneficial, and recognize that fact. So, in short, a columbarium has niches, which are, I guess the box, I've described as a little box, that you put the ashes in. And the proposal is for 270 niches in Phase A, and then in total, there will be 846 niches as part of the project. The standard of relief for our variance is the D2 Sika balancing test. So first, we're gonna identify the public interest at stake, then we're gonna identify the detrimental effect, if any, that will ensue from the grant of the variance. Third, we will discuss any detrimental impacts and how we can reduce that with conditions of approval. And then fourth, we'll ask you to weigh the positive and negative criteria and determine whether, on balance, the grant of the variance would cause a substantial detriment to the public good. I think that we will demonstrate to you that this proposal will not constitute any substantial detriment or impairment. And with that, I will now turn it over, and just one more thing. If you notice, we have quite an audience today, and if you pulled into the parking lot, you were probably thinking, what's going on? I believe most of these are friends of the church, or shrine, sorry.
Friends are nice.
Yes, so friends are nice, don't stress yet.
Before you do, could I have the attorney swear in, our experts, and what experts are you gonna have?
Mr. Moschella and Father Molina.
Well, he's a witness, he's not an expert.
Right, right, right.
He still needs to be sworn in.
Yeah, he still needs to be sworn in. But swear him as a witness, and the rest of them as experts.
Thank you.
All right, I'll start with you guys. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth in this matter, so help you God?
I do.
All right, you're sworn.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you.
So Father Molina, can you tell us a little bit about yourself and the shrine?
Good evening to all, and to you, Chairman...
You can use that handheld one if you want, and then move yours that closer. It's on, it should be on.
Chairman Gurek, and the honorable members of the board. Firstly, we want to thank you for considering our request for the use of variance to construct the columbarium at the Shrine of St. Joseph. Let me just start with a little, little history. When our founder, Father Judge, came to look for a place where he could place a house to serve priests who had problems with alcohol, and also to serve the migrants that were now coming from New York and around the area here in New Jersey. He found that that hill, where we are now, previously was meant, intended for a cemetery for the Newark diocese. But he learned that the diocese dropped it because that whole hill is actually a solid basalt rock. And so it became then a shrine. Forest campsite for the youth, and so on and so forth. And so, building the columbarium is like going back to what the original intent was for that hill. So for 100 years, we have not changed our mission and the things that we do there. It had always been a place for the poor, especially migrants, or coming into the area, and always a place for families and children, so that they can find a place for serenity and peace amidst all the toils and drudges of daily living. Now, the columbarium is an open garden, as you see, adjoining now the 9/11 Tower, where 2,977 victims of that atrocious day are lovingly commemorated. So the two of them, the columbarium and the 9/11 Tower, is really meant to put the living and the dead together, so that both, all of us, can really continue to offer to God our prayers for them. That's the columbarium. It is also our response to the unstoppable increase in cremation, especially among those who are economically challenged and cannot afford traditional funeral and burial costs. And there is a keen interest among the people, as you can see, in support of this project. Moreover, the Catholic Church has mandated that ashes of the deceased be preserved in a consecrated permanent place, such as cemetery or a columbarium, because the Church does not approve that ashes be scattered in nature. So we expect four to seven burial funeral services for ashes a year. We maintain an efficient scheduling system for events and activities to control properly the movement of traffic and cars for our 154 parking spaces there. And for instance, we do not allow funerals on a Sunday. And during the whole day, we have staggered masses. So that's a way to really control the use of our traffic. The entombment of ashes is easier to fit into a schedule than the burial of bodies. Ashes are dry entities, and there's no rush. So we can really maintain that in our scheduling system. As in regular cemeteries, the number of daily visitors should pose no problem. The frequency of family and group visits is occasional and seasonal, maybe on their anniversary, death anniversary, and so on, or November 2nd. So we can manage the scheduling of all those visits. I hope this gives a picture now of our request for the use of the variance. And I want to end by inviting you all, March 19, two weeks from now, will be our centennial, 100 years there. So you are more than welcome.
Give the mic closer.
You are more than welcome to come and join us in that celebration. Thank you very much.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. or Father Molina?
Wait a minute. Is... Besides this testimony you're gonna have, who's your expert? What is he?
Mr. Moschella is an engineer.
Engineer, okay. All right, does any board member have a question for the witness that just testified?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Father, well, thank you first for that thorough explanation of the intended use, it was helpful, a reasonable explanation of what you intend to do there. Did I hear you say, did I hear correctly that there's three to four ashes and two there per year?
Five to seven.
Five to seven?
A year.
Per year? Okay. So that's a long range planning, what we're talking about, seven hundred, very long.
Oh, yeah.
Because families buy the niches, even if they're not, even if they're not using it immediately.
Sure, yeah, correct.
So you have, you have people pre-buying that and reserving. You can say, keep the mic, because you're gonna be answering questions.
Yeah.
Cemeteries, I obviously plan for very long term, right?
Yes.
I'm familiar with that a little bit. But also, it must be maintained in perpetuity, is that correct also?
Yes.
So do you have a plan for that also? Does that continue your expansion beyond what you have already planned?
Yes, we do, yes.
Well, what, what is the maintenance that would have to be done in this?
The maintenance will be the shrines.
Yeah, but what is it? What, what does it entail?
We, we have an irrigation system there, and we have the manicured garden. We have also maintenance of all the trees, and so on and so forth, but including all the niches on the walls.
So it's gonna, what?
I have a follow-up.
Go ahead.
With the perpetuity situation...
Could you move that mic a little closer?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to hear. Obviously, you have a financial plan also, a long-range financial plan to maintain this?
Yes.
In perpetuity?
Yes, we do.
Is that through a foundation or some type of trust instrument? How is that done?
We have our own, yes.
You have your own?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Out of curiosity, these niches that you will have, is it one per family, is it one per person, for deceased body? Well, not longer body, but for deceased person?
It's one for a family, and it, and it could contain two urns, or three urns.
So it's two to three urns in each?
Yeah.
Beautiful.
Correct. And, and the niches are 12 by 12.
12 by 12. And how deep?
Yes.
12 inches deep, 12 inches wide?
12.
Okay, it's a box.
Yes.
Any other questions by board members?
Mr. Aronio touched on the perpetuity, that you have a plan for, and you said yes. I mean, it's kinda hard to plan for perpetuity, but just kinda curious what, in general, what is the plan? That there would be, you know, 200 years from now, there would be another need, and, you know, Ed here would have to see another case?
Yes.
Presented.
You're flattering.
You know, I mean, is that the long-range plan? Because the site was, you know, destined for this use, is what you're explaining.
Well, we will, we will first build...
Assuming that people are still passing 200 years from now and not living forever, you know.
Yeah. We will, we will build now the 270 niches, and we can move into Phase 3, as we are able to sell also some of those niches. So we are, we are looking at 30-year?
30-year plan?
The one now is, how many niches? I'm getting confused with some of the numbers.
How many, what's the first thing?
Because now I know, now I...
270 will be the first.
Which holds 700, I thought I heard a 700, 800 number.
Total, there will be 846.
Niches?
Correct.
Which has a capability of two to three per niche?
Urns, yes.
Urns, okay.
Still another, oh, you got the math? Okay.
Yeah, two times eight is 16, 100.
Any other questions by the board members?
Is there a financial plan?
Yes, we do.
And, and if I could just interject, I think that the overall question is, is there a plan to further expand this beyond, and can you explain what that is?
Correct, so the 270 is just the beginning. 270, right? That's a Phase 1 and 2. And then we will go into Phase 3.
If needed.
Yes.
But that's for another board, not this one.
In, in, when, when we are able to sell them, so that's probably in 10 years, when we go into Phase 3.
Sell is a lot different than use.
Yeah.
You can sell them all off, and they wouldn't be used.
Yes.
So potentially, you could have the entire thing sold off.
Correct.
And you're asking for approval of essentially all three phases?
All three phases, right. So you're going to phase in the construction, but you're asking the approval for all three?
Correct.
See, that's, that's what you were...
Yeah, I thought it was just one.
No, it's, it's the whole shebang you're...
The whole shebang.
Okay.
Can I ask a question of the attorney? We can approve that?
Yeah, that's good.
Isn't there a one-year limitation?
Once they begin construction and pull permits, they've vested their approval.
For all phases.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
In my view.
Yeah.
So you plan on...
Once they put the shovel on the ground.
You plan on breaking ground within the next year? If this is approved? Okay.
Well, they're pretty quick. The last time we gave approval, that thing's done already, right?
Maybe even this year.
But, so, any other questions from board members? Does the audience have any questions of this witness? Yes, come on up, sir. You have a question? Would you hand him that microphone, please? And you can stand at the podium. Please tell us your name, address, and then state your question. Stand behind the podium, please.
Yes, my name is Pavel Donbrowski, I am the owner of the property adjacent to the parish.
Which side, if you're looking at it?
East side.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you give me your address?
Yeah, the address.
It's 0 Broad Street, there is no house there, so...
Oh, oh, okay.
And my question is, those three phases, are they all shown on the map that was submitted, or is it only one phase?
Yes, I believe they were all shown on the...
So, so the way it's gonna look is the three phases?
Right.
Okay. So this drawing right here is the three phases?
Correct.
Okay, yes, according to them.
Okay, so everything is on the west side of the property, basically, right? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the public?
I have a question.
Yes, come on up. State your name and, and address, and, and your question.
Amber Jimenez, we live adjacent to the shrine as well, we're at 1122 Long Hill Road in Sterling. We received a certified letter, has, says nothing about these phases. So it does have the number that you guys are planning, the number of niches. It doesn't state, how do we know it's, these 700 and something niches, or phase, include Phase 3?
That's the total amount.
Right, but you guys keep saying phases?
The phases just so we can construct as necessary, we don't wanna construct everything in a lot.
Right, as necessary can, can mean, in 10 years from now, you plan on doing 800 more niches?
No, 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 we're not seeking a...
They don't like to do as many niches as we give them permission to do. Whether they build them in sections is up to them.
But nothing is saying Phase 3?
There's only gonna be three phases, and that last phase will be when we complete the 846.
But what are we approving tonight? Phase 1, 2, and 3?
Yeah, all three.
That wasn't very clearly notified to any neighbors.
So, I mean, it's, the question of phasing is more just an internal construction question for them.
But also noted on all the plans that were posted on the public agenda, all from the engineer and the site plans.
That's all three phases, from what we understand.
Yeah, but it's not stated anywhere on there, phases, so...
I mean, what they're asking for is approval to build everything, and if they wanna phasing...
Right, but what is, nothing is being cleared, what is everything?
800, what is it?
What is shown here?
800.
Their application, they're asking for approval of the application.
Right, but on the application, doesn't say anything about Phase 1, 2, 3?
So they don't have to say that? That's what they're trying to do.
Okay, it's very vague.
But they don't have to say phases, they can do 10 phases if they want.
Unfortunately, legal notices are always very vague and can be very confusing to the public with legal mumble jumbo. So normally, when notices are received, my office gets a lot of calls to try to explain, people come look at the plans. But this is the reason why they're testifying, so they can explain the project.
So I guess then my question is, is how do we know it's gonna stop here, Phase 3?
That's all they have approval for.
Thank you.
If, if in fact, they wanted to continue beyond Phase 3, they would have to come back with another application to this, to the board that is then present, and ask for a larger extension. At that time, they would have the same thing they would be doing now. They would show us what was there, and then they would have to show us what they wanted built in addition. So now, we are giving them what they show us here, which is, they can build this in any phase they want, but if they wanna go beyond this, it's another application.
Okay, as long as that's clear.
Yes.
And to be clear, you would get a notice as well?
Yeah, you would get a notice, you or someone else owning the property would get a notice.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have any concerns? Did you have any concerns about it?
We do, but that comes in public session.
Yeah, well, yeah, if, you might have that question for the engineer. If you have a concern, the engineer might be a better person.
Right, so we'll adjust those later.
You're welcome. Any other questions of this witness? Yes, ma'am?
Can I stand here? I have arthritis.
Would someone like to give her the mic? You can stand there, but we'll have to give you the mic.
All right, I do have a question. I live at 1122 Long Hill Road, we have the property adjacent to it. My leach field is all the way in the back of my property, and it would seem like it's going to be adjacent to this. This, their side of the property is elevated, my leach field is down here. What kind of assurances do I have? Has an environmental study been done, drainage?
Well, that...
What can I, or what, what kind of recourse would I have in the future if my $65,000 leach field was impacted by this?
That's a good question, but that question is more of an engineering question. Their engineer's gonna address those issues with dry wells, drainage, and, and water runoff. So when you hear the, those topics being discussed, you can ask that question of their engineer, our engineer, or, all right?
Okay, and number two, what kind of barrier would be up there so I can enjoy my property? There is no barriers at all, really, except down my driveway. What if people start wandering onto my property? This would be a liability for me, correct? Is there going to be some kind of a fence installed?
Well, that's a good question. That, that's a valid question. Your property is directly to the left of this property?
That's right, 1122 Long Hill Road.
Can you say the direction, is it to the west?
To the west.
You're facing the shrine, it's to the west?
Uh, yes, to the...
To the east?
No, it's not.
No, it's to the west.
It's the west.
Yeah.
Okay.
If it was to the east, it'd be in the parking lot, so you're to the west. So you're actually the house that's right...
That's right, the old Meehawal property, I'm sure people knew him.
Recently purchased that house?
Uh, four years ago.
Four years ago, okay, so I just wanna try to get a proximity of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, as far as your concern with visibility or privacy, that's something that the board can consider. We can take a look at that as far as the plans look at, and maybe that's something we can suggest to the applicant.
Yes, and I'm just thinking, this is really quite an enormous property.
Yeah.
Perhaps there would be another place for it to go, because there's, what, how Perhaps there would be another place for it to go, 'cause there's what, how many acres?
I think sixty-four?
Fifty-four acres, yeah.
Yeah.
We live in a little two-and-a-half acre, so it seemed like there's plenty of availability there for this. Go ahead and do it. We've always had a good relationship with the shrine.
As far as the location goes, uh, the board can only consider what's before it.
Okay.
We're not experts on this property. If it had to be moved, or they chose to move it, would it be a whole new application? So, I, I think let's deal with what we have here and let the engineers, uh, discuss that issue. And we'll discuss the privacy issue, and then you can have a question after that, all right?
All righty.
Thank you.
Here you go.
All right, uh, any other questions of this witness? And, and understand, we're gonna be hearing from engineers, we're gonna be hearing from our planner. Uh, so there'll be other issues that will be questioned at that point. Um, right now, we've heard testimony as to the use of it, the reason for it, the future use of it, and the expectations of it. Uh, no more questions? All right. I'm gonna close it to the public for that questioning. Um, next witness?
Thank you, I'd like to call Mr. Moshe.
All right, before you go begin to testify, you are engineer?
I'm a civil engineer, correct.
And your current, your license is current?
My license is current in the state of New Jersey, yes.
And you've testified before boards before?
I've testified before a hundred boards within the state of New Jersey.
You're qualified.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. All right, so, I am going to go with a couple exhibits I wanna put up for the board this evening.
Okay.
To explain the project in a little bit more detail, and then we'll get into this, to get into the specifics of it, so...
Yeah, go over here. If any of the board, if any of the public wants to look at that, you can come around and, and, and stand over there, 'cause I wanna make sure our board members can see it, so... There's no ideal place to put these things. I take it that's the outline of the property?
Mark these as A1 for the record?
Yeah, were, were they submitted as part of the, uh...
No, these are, these are new exhibits.
Okay.
So the first one's entitled aerial exhibit. It's dated March fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
And marked A1 for the record.
Okay. Put the date on it.
Okay. So, just hold on one second.
So what we're looking at here is the, basically the twenty-twenty state aerials that were released just a couple of years ago now. Um, and just for reference purposes, there you go. Um, north is up on the plan. And you have Long Hill Road that runs in east-west direction, um, which is County Road six fifty-seven, shown on the plan there. That goes across in an east-west direction on the plan. The property itself is known as Block fourteen one oh one, Lot sixty-three. Um, it's within your conservation or C-zone within the township, and that's, that's basically the entire property, plus all of the properties to the north of the property itself, so in the conservation zone. Some of the surrounding properties to the east and the west are within your R, R-two zone, residential two zone.
Members of the public, you're welcome to come closer if you'd like.
That's one of the six.
Okay. And then for the, for, for the most part, the property I said is in the C-zone, and then one property across the street is also in your C-zone as well. The rest are in your residential zones. Um, as I, as we mentioned, the property's actually thirty-five point three nine acres, and that's to the, um, center line of, of the right-of-way. And then there was actually an easement that was granted to Morris County for roadway purposes, which brings the usable acreage down to thirty-four point five five, just for reference purposes. But that was done a number of years ago now, and that's been in place for some time. Um, it's been developed, a- as has been mentioned already by Father, with you have the, uh, the chapel, the auditorium, um, um, the clergy residences, and existing development that's occurred on the property today. Between the buildings and the existing parking lot that's on the property is a hundred and fifty-two parking spaces that exist out there today. Um, there's three access points off of Long Hill Road into the property, two that go, to that access, the, the smaller parking lot here, and then another access point that accesses the larger parking lot to the west of the property. Um, as you can see from the aerial mapping, the majority of the property is wooded to the rear.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's, it's been, it's, you know, undeveloped and wooded. Um, there's basically a ridge line that runs across through the property here that splits the, the drainage divide on the hillside. And you have the views to the north, which is the Great Swamp, and then to, and you have your views to the south as well. Um, the area that we're gonna be focusing on this evening is the, is this little wood, open space area here, right next to the nine eleven memorial. Um, as Father pointed out, this is...
To the, to the south of the nine eleven?
Actually, just to the west of the nine eleven memorial.
Southwest, right?
No, just directly to the west.
Oh.
Nine eleven memorial's right here.
Okay.
Talking about this little, this spot right here.
Oh, okay, it's directly to the west, okay.
Just directly to the west. It's actually an open area right now. It's lawn.
It's, it's been maintained as lawn. Um, there's trees that surround it, um, and, and that's the area that we're, that we're focusing on for this application, um, this evening. And just to point out, in, in that particular area, there's no wetlands, um, state open waters or flood plains. It's basically manicured lawn, except for the trees that are around it, and it's adjacent to the existing parking area. So, moving on to the next exhibit.
We'll call this A2 for the record?
Sure.
And it's entitled site plan rendering. Also dated March fifth, twenty twenty-four. This is a composite...
Uh, you need the microphone.
This is a composite rendering of the, um, state aerial mapping in the background, um, as you can see it on here, um, with, uh, rendering of the proposed, um, project that we're talking about this evening. So to get into some specifics of the details of, of the project itself, just to, just to, before I get into that, just pointing out some of the reference points on the plan. Here's the western property line in yellow here, okay, with the adjacent property. We have the nine eleven memorial, that, that's this, this, uh, representation here on the plan with, with, with the clock tower that you see here, or the bell tower, I'm sorry, bell tower, that, that's here. Um, the existing parking lot, that's on the lower portion of the plan here. You can see the, um, couple parking spaces already there. That's identified on the plan. And then you have the, um, proposed columbarium, which, and, and there was some talk about different phases. And I'm gonna kinda talk, not so much phases as opposed to the different columbariums and when they're gonna be built. So, and I'll get into the details of that, uh, when I, when I, when I go through it in, in more specific detail. But what we're looking to do here is construct basically, um, two new ADA parking spaces that would service both the columbarium and the nine eleven memorial.
Where are they gonna be?
They're shown right here on the plan, just off the edge of the existing pavement.
Okay.
Okay, so the two new ADA parking spaces, there'll be a series of concrete walkways that come off of that ADA parking space that go both to the east and to the west. Okay, those are ADA compliant, so you can get to the, the upper portion of the columbarium or the lower portion of the columbarium. It is, it is slightly, um, I'll say stepped by a couple feet, two, three feet, that separate the upper portion from the lower portion, 'cause there's a slight slope on the land here.
Is the parking lot higher or lower than the columbarium?
The parking lot is higher. The ridge line is actually just off to the bottom of the, the, the map here that splits the, the mountain. So when you're on this side, you're on the downhill side, going towards the swamp, the great swamp. And when you're in the middle of the parking lot, it drains back towards the, the county road.
So it's lower than the parking lot?
It's lower than the parking lot. So from a...
Estimated forty feet, fifty, a hundred feet?
Nah, like about, about eight to twelve, fourteen feet, depending on where you are on the property here compared to the ridge line on the parking lot.
The ground level is about eight feet lower than the parking lot?
Eight, eight to twelve feet lower than the parking lot, depending on how you compare that, to, to, to the peak of the parking lot.
Yeah, sure. So I'm just trying to, you, to the east-west, you're talking about size of big, and I wanna start to understand how tall this is, 'cause I think we're all pretty familiar with the, the memorial there and how tall that is, and how that can be seen or not seen from certain places, right?
The, the elevation of this is much lower itself. The, 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 the bell tower is much taller. This is much lower to grade.
In feet.
In feet, correct.
What, what are the, uh, what's the highest wall that's gonna be on it?
Oh, um, the columbarium walls. They're about seven, they're about seven, seven point two-five to seven point five feet high.
Okay.
And those are, those are the walls that are, that will hold the niches.
Right, that's what I mean.
Right, tho- those are the tallest things there, and we have a couple smaller retaining walls to hold back the grade and everything.
If they're seven feet high and the parking lot was...
Eight to, eight to twelve, to, I mean, again, the parking lot's probably five to six feet grade difference from the, from the peak of the parking lot to the edge, and then it starts dropping off further from there.
So then you could let, if you had a really long board, it would be from the parking lot to the top of one of the columbarium, like, it wouldn't be sticking up above the parking lot. It would be at the same height.
No, actually, it'd be, or below it, for that matter.
A little lower, yeah.
Correct. Yeah, part of, part of my, my testament was gonna be that, this is, this is really not visible from, from the public driving on Long Hill Township. No, no problem.
You were talking to the mentions, and I just wanted to get a sense of height.
Yeah, so, so it's, it's much, it, grade-wise, it's dropping off from the top, from the peak of the parking lot. And, you know, I can, I don't have all the grades in the parking lot, but just for reference purposes, I could tell you that, give me one second here. Since we're talking about grades. So, just roughly, right on the plan, where my pointer is here in the lower right-hand corner of the plan, the, the contour in the parking lot is about elevation four fourteen. Okay? The lower level of the patio, and keep in mind now, this is split. Okay, without getting into, this, there's a, there's an upper plateau here and a lower plateau. There's about three stairs that separate it, um, from the upper to lower, three to four stairs. Um, the lower plateau level here, um, is at elevation four oh one. So you get about thirteen-foot grade change from, from the parking lot here down to that point right there. So, just to give you a sense, so it's gonna be much lower than, than, than the parking lot. Um, this, this plat, this upper section is about elevation four oh four, four oh three to four oh four in here, so about three-foot grade difference. And you're coming up to the edge of the road here, just for reference purposes, that's about elevation four, we, we, four oh four as well. So the idea was to kinda match the grade here with the edge of the road here at about elevation four oh four. So, when you come in off the pavement, you're, you're kinda walking to the upper level, and then you're gonna be able to go around the, the, the columbarium either by this ramping system that we have here, or you could take the walkway around to the lower level, depending on how you, you wanna go. And depending when it's also built out too, and I'll talk about the phasing, um, a little, a little later on. But the, the intent here is that you have an access point off the ADA parking spaces, and you have an access point from the parking lot to access the, the columbarium. Now, the way it's laid out is we've got, um, basically three sections to it. You've got the middle section or main section where you're coming off this walkway. You've got this basically a little more, not quite circular, um, center section here where we have a statue or, or, or a feature in the middle here, um, that represents the circular portion of the walkway, with stairs that take you from the upper portion to the lower portion. And then there is one columbarium wall. You can see this ar, this curved wall here. That's, we'll call that columbarium wall A, for all intensive purposes, as it's noted on the plan. And I believe that is going to be considered, I'll call it phase one, or the first columbarium they're gonna build, okay? And that one has, just for the record, so I make sure I note this right, a hundred and seventy-four niches, okay? And that's this, that's this columbarium wall here. Okay, then when you move off to the right or to the east, we have this additional patio area. And this, and all this patio space or flat space will be built at the same time. Okay, so, so, and, and I'll go into the phasing, but basically from where my pointer is on the plan here, on, on the west side, this entire section and this entire section will all be built at the same time, okay? Columbarium wall A will be installed first, a hundred and seventy-four niches. And then there's a second columbarium wall B, which is over here on the plan, okay? And that one actually said on the plan, it actually said a hundred and fourteen, but that was mislabeled. It's gonna be ninety-six niches. Okay? Ninety-six niches. So for phase one, so for initially, for, I'll call it wall A and wall B, there would be two hundred and seventy niches that would be installed at that time. And again, depending on when they install wall A and wall B, all the flat work or, or patio work will be done first and finished. Wall A will be installed first, and then wall B would go in at the appropriate time, once there is a, a need for it, depending on the, the, the demand and how long it takes for those, for those, um, niches to be sold and ultimately be used. And then what they're also proposing to do is, the, the third part of this, which is the circular area to the west, um, and, and there's two sections to the circular area. There's, there's the walkway that goes around, which has stairs on it, that takes you from the upper level to the lower level. Then we've also included on the inner portion of that, a ramping system for ADA accessibility to each of the different levels that go around there. Okay? So there's actually six columbariums that circle this area, okay? Each of them have ninety-six niches in them, for a total of five hundred and, and, um, for a total of five hundred and seventy-six. So ultimately, at the end of build-out, as this, as I'll call it, we would have eight hundred and forty-six niches that would be, that would be available here, um, for the site. But the intent is to construct the, I'll say, the, the east side of this line first. You build all this patio space. You construct these walkways. You construct the access to the nine eleven memorial. That all gets built. Columbarium wall A goes in, and then wall B would go in at the appropriate time. And then once that is completed, and then there's a demand for it, they will then construct the, um, western side of this, this project.
So nothing on the western side will be constructed?
That is correct. So in this, in the plan...
That's the eastern side. That's the...
The western side.
Western side.
That's the west side?
Yeah, the west, this is, this is the west, yeah.
That's right, that's the west side. I'm sorry. I got confused.
The, the pathways are clear, and you pointed out the six other, how you say it?
Columbariums.
Columbariums.
Yes.
Um, what are the other brown things on the outer part of the circle?
The other?
Yeah, are those plants? Those little things?
Well, there's green things that are plants. No. Right on the circle, yes, that.
So...
Yeah, what are those?
In, in front of, in front of each of the columbariums is a small landscaped area. And you could actually see it on...
Okay, I just thought they were like more...
If I go back to that image that we put on, you can see it here. There's a little landscape there in front, in front of the columbarium. There'll be plantings in there, flowers, things in there.
But what's in between? What he was mentioning is these little brown sections in between the walls. What are they?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not prepared.
Right, right there?
That's, that's the walkway area.
No, no, no.
And on the outer, the outer circle.
Yeah, that little brown patch.
Well, they're benches.
Benches. Oh, they're benches, okay.
Yes, there's, there's, there's benches there.
The benches are on the inside, the columbariums are on the outside.
Okay. Benches are in between the columbariums, basically.
Yeah, basically, at each columbarium, there's a bench.
Okay.
Where you could sit down and, and, and reflect upon, looking at the, uh, the columbarium that's there.
All right, okay.
So from, when you break ground on phase one to completion, do you have an estimated timeframe on that?
We, we would actually like to start construction this spring. We're actually ready, if, if the board acts favorably upon it. It's, it's a couple of months.
Okay.
To, 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 to do this work for this whole section over here, it's a couple of months.
And is there an anticipated timing in terms of starting phase three? Or what's the impetus for that?
So, so basically, th- this whole section will get built now, and on, on the eastern side of where my pointer is here. The second, I call it, I keep calling it phase two, we're calling it phase three, but the, 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 the rest of the columbariums, six others, there's no timeframe for that. It's really gonna come in play in terms of how quickly, um, niches are sold, and then when they have the available time to go in and, and build that, that other section. It could be, it could be a couple of years down the road. It could be ten years down the road. You know, when you're, when you're doing things like this for, for interments and, and, and things such as this, you, you, you're talking years and decades. You don't talk in months, you know, in terms of how these things sell over time. So you plan for twenty, thirty years down the road that you could be, you know what, it could be twenty years before they build that.
Now, I know we've had, we've had some concern with neighbors as far as water runoff and, you know, the neighbor to your west. Would you discuss some of the ways you're gonna control the water on the site?
Yeah, so, everything basically slopes from, I'll say, south, southeast to northwest in this general direction across the plan. Okay, the parking lot drains this way. The topography drains this general direction, general direction towards the western property line. It does not go up gradient. The house that is adjacent to the property line, um, I believe it was eleven twenty-two was the address that was just mentioned, is just right here off of the plan, but the grade goes downhill from here. The intent here is, we're proposing a series of dry wells. There's three dry wells that are gonna be installed as part of phase one.
And where are they gonna be located?
You see them right here on the plan. There's an outline of them right here.
All right.
And then there's a fourth dry well that would go in as part of phase two.
So that would keep the water from going off your property onto that west?
Correct. It would be directed into the woods and into the woods, so that this way it goes down gradient. Um, and it's gonna infiltrate the runoff that's coming off of this, this site, um, and, and, and control it, um, before it discharges it. So that, that's the intent of the stormwater for, for controlling that. There's actually, um, there's also an inlet here that we're gonna put in just to pick up some of the parking lot runoff and discharge it towards this way around.
You're gonna take care of some of the parking lot, but isn't done now?
Correct, that isn't done now. It's gonna control some of that with an inlet and some discharge pipes.
Now, we've also heard some, some concern by way of a question as to, um, landscaping and, um, uh, site blockage of, from the neighbors. How are you gonna control that as far as the impact of this structure or this, this project to the neighbors?
Well, we weren't proposing to remove any trees on the western side of the site.
Well, how many trees are there?
I, existing trees? I didn't count all of them.
I mean, is it thick enough not to see it, or do you need more, or that's what I'm asking?
There is, there is a, there, there's, there's a, there is a landscape bu, I see a landscape. There is existing trees that are over here. I mean, existing. They're all different sizes of, of trees. I, I, I believe there's actually some, some vegetative growth that's going on along this property line right now at the parking lot. I think it's, I think it might even be bamboo that's growing there.
What's the distance between the edge of the western side of what you, what the, the last phase there?
So this di...
And the yellow line?
Well, this, this distance, I'm, I, this distance from the columbarium to the yellow line is about fifty feet or so, forty, forty-five feet. The distance to the house is about a hundred and ten feet. I checked that on, on Google, um, Google Earth, uh, this, this morning.
Now, what's, sightline-wise, what's blocking the sightline of that hundred and ten feet?
It, it's just the, just the existing vegetation that's there. That, that's all that we have there. 'Cause again, we're, we're down gradient from, from the house. The house is actually slight, slightly higher than us.
Okay.
So we're, we're down gradient.
Well, sometimes slightly higher gives you a better view.
Or you're looking over, past it.
Well, except you have a landscaping plan here. Well, except you have a landscaping plan here.
We, we do have landscaping here that we're proposing, so-
So can you talk about that?
The existing, I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
The existing vegetation, that's pretty thick, alright.
There, there is, there is some vegetative growth out there. Yes, along the property line. Correct. And, and we're not proposing to remove any of those existing trees, on, on this side of the property.
Right, but are you removing any trees at all for this?
We do have to remove about, I think it was, um, sixteen trees generally in, in, in this area between the nine eleven memorial and, and the, and the ADA spaces.
But not closer to the border?
Not over here, we're going to enhance some of that landscaping, but again, some of this will be done as part of the, the, I'll call it phase two or phase three, depending how you wanna look at it. When we do this circular section here, we would do the landscaping around here. This landscaping, generally speaking, would go in when we do phase one. And, and not all of this would be disturbed, because we wouldn't be building it.
What's there now, and where that, uh, last phase was gonna go?
This is, it's lawn.
It's lawn?
Yeah, and it's gonna remain as lawn.
If I could just jump in, that stone design has a pullout in our package?
Yes, that's why.
Of the picture facing west, in the wooded area. Yeah, if, if that's interesting to you. Yes, that's a good idea. Yes. That is part of that looking, looking west towards that wooded area. They're actually, you're actually, in that photo, you're actually standing right about here. Looking down through this whole entire area, that's the tree edge line that we're looking at right there.
Yes.
I'm assuming too, wow, this microphone's awfully loud. I'm assuming too that, a resident had brought up as well, the, the possibility, the, the prospect of, you know, this possibly being a liability, the, the idea of somebody haphazardly walking onto her personal property, but via these photos and what you're proposing, it seems to be such that the idea of even walking onto somebody else's property would seem, it, it wouldn't make any sense, because it's too heavily, too densely-
You'd have to walk through the woods to, to get to someone else's property.
Okay.
You know, so, and again, you'd be, the idea here is to keep the visitors on the paths.
Right.
So they park in the parking lot, because you, once you come over the, once you come into the parking lot and go over the, the, the ridge, you're gonna, you're gonna see this, this walkway. It's actually, there's a, there's a wooded area here and a wooded area here, so it's actually sort of screened already from the parking lot.
It's enclosed, yeah.
So it's kind of enclosed when you, when you, you're there, you want it to be peaceful, you want it to be quiet and serene, you don't want it to be, you know, right there when, when you see it, so that's why you have this landscaping here and this landscaping here. Even with the nine eleven memorial, when you come in, there's vegetation in front of it, it's not, you don't see the whole thing, until you walk there and get to it. So the idea is when you come in and you park, we want you to walk on the paths to the columbarium. You, you'll, you'll see an entry here that really invites you into the, to, to the focal point of, of the columbarium, which is the center here, and that's where we want you to go. We don't want people, you don't wanna be walking towards the, towards the western property line. You're coming here, that's the purpose of why we've, we've kind of oriented it that way.
We have two-
Go, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, two questions, number one, what, I, I mean, I assume that if you're gonna build, and whatever phases you wanna call that, the western portion, as, as long as you wanna build one columbarium on that side, you will need the entire path system, right?
Yes, so, so, this, this is the dividing line right here.
Yeah.
So once they decide to construct, they filled up all the niches, or they're close to filling up all the niches on the, the east side, they will have to construct this, all these improvements here, in order to start-
But they may not put all the columbariums in on that side at the same time as they-
They don't have to, very, yes.
And what is the material for the path and the, and the, I mean, are these, they look different colors, but are they all the same material?
There's, there's basically two different types of material. The, the, well, the parking, the parking spaces are asphalt.
Yeah, obviously, yeah.
Um, the side, the, the lighter gray here, or, or the, I'll say the tannish color is, um, is concrete.
Okay.
Okay, basically from the ADA spaces is concrete to here, concrete down to the nine eleven memorial. This path here is concrete, and then the rest of it-
Completely impervious coverage?
Right, and then the rest of it is all pavers.
Okay, so they're semi-pervious?
Uh, we're treating them as impervious for the purposes of the calculation for stormwater, um, but they're gonna be pavers, and, and, and there's gonna be, you know, stone banding or concrete banding to hold it in place, and the columbariums will be placed on, um, they have to be placed on a, a solid concrete foundation, these are large, um, stone, you know, stone structures, you know, so they have to be placed on a concrete foundation. Um, but, but there, but this is a paver, a paver walk through here, now, there's nothing saying that they couldn't decide to do these walkways and pavers if they decide to do that, we show them as concrete, but they could be done in pavers.
So you wouldn't consider them to be, uh, have any features that would be able to absorb what you would-
No, that's why, that's why we put the dry wells in, I mean, really what we're constructing here is, 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 is a highly, nicely landscaped patio, if you wanna call it that, or outdoor space for the columbariums.
I mean, I don't, I'm, I'm obviously not in that field, but is that something that's even available, like, to make it more impervi- uh, like pervious coverage that, pavers that actually have ability to absorb water, or is that not something you would even consider?
No, I mean, y- y- you could do that, however, in, in the case here, since we have the dry wells and they're sized to accommodate the runoff, it was just, it, it just felt that we're gonna collect it with some drains, put it in the dry wells, let the dry wells infiltrate. Since we're, we're so close to the, to the development, it's not like you're, you're building something that we're spreading it out over a large area, and I'm, if I was doing seven, eight hundred feet of a walkway going somewhere, I might consider making it out of pervious material, because then I don't have to collect it to one point. But here, since we're, since we're so compact, if you will, in terms of the development, you know, collecting and putting in the dry wells make, make the most sense for, for what we're proposing here.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Gary. Um, we talked a lot about the current vegetation that's bordering, uh, on the western side of the project, and I see several colored other dots, and I don't know what those are, the large, are they ornamental trees that are made to beautify the space?
Yeah, so what we're looking to do is, we're not looking to cut down any trees that are, that are here. And again, keep in mind too that this is an aerial with, with the tree canopies that are above it, but we're looking to infill along this perimeter with ornamental and hardwood trees to, to complete the look when we build this, this, this next phase. At the same time, when we do the initial phase of work, all these larger green dots and purple dots here are also ornamental or hardwoods that are gonna be, that are gonna be put in with this initial phase of, of the work. In total, we had, um, six deciduous, twelve ornamental, there were two evergreens, there were forty-one shrubs, and then we have perennial ground covers a, as well, that were gonna be intermixed here.
And I guess the reason for those is just to make it look better?
Yes, to enhance the, to enhance the experience when you're here in this, in this area, and, and you're sitting there, um, looking at the columbariums.
Make it more like the nature.
Correct.
Is there any reason, I understand maybe you don't wanna put the, the few that are in the front, because you might wanna access from the parking lot while you're building, but is there any reason why you can't put at least the four on the side up right away, so that it does provide some screening immediately for the neighbors, as well as-
These couple trees over here?
Yes.
Which ones, these four or these four?
I'm talking about the four directly on the side.
I mean, I don't see an issue with, with planting them early on.
Because that would also kind of delineate where-
The line is.
The line is, right?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's certainly, I mean, plant them now, and they could, you know, in ten, fifteen years, they can grow up, so I don't think that would be such a bad thing to do.
And the dry wells, what's the intention for when each of those dry well sites are going to be built?
The three dry wells go in initially with phase one. That tan, that basically splits the site from here on over. The last, this dry well goes in when you build this phase here, so basically this one's actually gonna be, this one's slightly oversized for phase one.
Okay.
But it balances it out once you build, um, phase two, but these three are going in first.
How close, on the west side, those four trees we were just talking about, how close is that to the yellow borderline?
Uh, I'd have to just-
Maybe about twenty-five, thirty feet.
Okay.
Just roughly?
Could be a little bit.
So you need the setback?
Yeah.
What, what is the setback in a conservation zone for stuff on the sides?
Twenty-five feet.
Yeah, but that wouldn't count, that wouldn't be for a tree, that would only be for a structure.
For a structure.
Yeah, the tree wouldn't count.
Fifty from the structure, he's already testified to that.
Yeah.
Right, right. But since I, since we talked about, I, I don't know, uh, complete, uh, regulations on what conservation, what can be done in conservation zones and what can't be done?
Well, uh, single-family homes are permitted, um, incidentally, we just had this conversation, houses of worship or church are not a permitted use in any zone in Long Hill, even though this church has been at this site, as was testified to, for a hundred years.
Right, but they're not building another church, yeah.
Right, but this is a, a, you know, accessory to that church.
Right. It becomes part of that use.
Exactly. Yes, exactly.
It's an expansion of an existing.
You're expanding the non-conformity, all of the applications that this board has looked at through the years recently, the chapel and the nine eleven memorial were all sort of considered accessory to the church use.
Any additional, uh-
I have a few more things I just wanted to touch on.
Yeah, I would just point out the same.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So just to kind of talk about, um, just the parking on the property, I think we mentioned there's a hundred and fifty-two spaces today, we'll have a hundred and fifty-four when we add the two ADA spaces. Um, so a hundred and fifty-four total spaces, and the way the parking's been looked at here is because of the chapel use and the auditorium use, they're basically non-concurrent activities. So even though the overall parking requirement is two hundred and eighteen spaces, um, we're really only gonna use a certain amount at any given time. So based on those operations, as, as Father pointed out, a hundred and fifty-four spaces is more than adequate to support the property, and for, for a use like this where, a, a, as they mentioned, there's maybe, you know, five to seven interments a year, but you're not talking about a funeral procession when that happens, it's usually happening weeks or months after a funeral, in which case you only have a few cars that are probably gonna be showing up for that to take place. And then the rest of the time, it's just visitors that are gonna come, and visitors are usually, you know, a car or two every once in a while, you don't have a lot of people showing up at one time to come here to, um, to, you know, to, to visit the space. So it, it really, it's, 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 it's really from a parking use, it's really minimal, um, over the course of time. So there's more than adequate parking on site to support it. There are no, in terms of just some other points to make about the use, there's no noise, it doesn't generate any noise, it's, it's, it's a very quiet use, there's no loudspeakers, there's no music out there, none of that is in place, it's just, it's meant to be an area to con, to sit down and contemplate, um, and, and be very peaceful in that regard, so there's no, there's no noise generating features there, there's no lights, this is open basically from dawn to dusk.
So no, no artificial lighting?
No artificial lighting for this development, I think there was a note on the plan about some low-level landscape lighting, but that was, in hindsight, we're putting, um, conduits in under the sidewalks for irrigation purposes, but we're not doing any lighting.
Okay.
So, so really, it is basically just open from dawn to dusk, like I, like I mentioned, um-
Is there going to be signage that says open from dawn to dusk?
Well, I think the, is there signage on the property already about dawn-to-dusk activities, or if, if not, if not, we can probably, you know, put some-
The only reason I'm saying that is because somebody could trip and fall if they go in there, it's dark and there's no light.
You don't wanna be there at night, correct, so I mean, we can certainly look to provide some type of discreet or, or, you know, tasteful signage, yes. And I think the nine ele, the nine eleven memorial's only, is same thing, it's only dawn to dusk, yes.
Well, here you have steps too, so-
Correct, correct, so we just wanna make sure that, that, so the, the purpose of that is to keep it just during daylight hours for, for, for the use that's there. Um, there's no other, um, there's no other, you know, facilities that are there, other than bringing irrigation water over for the landscaping, there's no, we don't need any bathrooms and no sewer facilities or anything like that, there's no other building structures, everything is open to the, um, to the environment in terms of, in terms of the use. There was, there is a proposed statue that we're, that we have in the middle of the landscape area here.
Would you go into detail about that, there was some question about that.
The final, this, I don't think the final statue itself has been picked yet, the, the rendering show a, a statue, but generally it's gonna be in the six to eight foot height range, um, is what we're anticipating for that statue, but-
Is that gonna be no higher than the walls?
Um, the walls are slightly lower than the statue, when you measure it from the ground to, to the top, it could be six to eight foot tall. The walls are seven, seven to seven and a half foot tall, so generally in, in about the same range. Um, but we just haven't chosen the final, um, the final statue look yet. And then there'll, there'll of course, um, be all, all the landscaping that I talked about already, that'll be there. And we talked about utilities in terms of stormwater. So I think that covers um, the, the amount, the majority of my direct testimony, oh, there was a question from the public about impact to septic systems.
Yeah.
Again, what we're proposing here is basically, uh, uh, you know, walkways and, and, and patio surfaces, and we have a dry well system that's going in place to deal with the increase in stormwater runoff. The state statute requires dry, requires any type of infiltration system to be fifty feet or more away from a septic field when you go for septic design. We're clearly more than fifty feet away from the property line with the, with the infiltration facilities, and depending on where that septic field is on the other property, there's, there should be no impact from a state standard for those separation distances.
And that structure is going to be built with such that the water is going to drain onto the rear of your property?
The water's draining in this, in, in this direction towards the rear. I don't know exactly where the septic system is on the adjacent property, but it's going to continue the existing runoff pattern that's there today.
Or decrease it with-
Well, well, correct, it will decrease some of the runoff because of the dry wells, but it will not alter that runoff pattern in the future.
So what you're saying is if there's no perceivable problem with it today to this leach field, there shouldn't be any problem with it?
There shouldn't be any problem in the future, it, we, is, we comply with the setbacks that are, that are mandated by the state.
And you're gonna be catching some of the runoff from the parking lot too?
Correct.
Which will actually maybe decrease.
It, it, it could decrease it slightly.
Alright, any other questions from the board?
I have another question, so did you consider having this, um, built either to the north or the east of the memorial? And if not, why not, and if you did, why can't it be built there?
When we when you look at the property, and you look at the layout of the property, I'll go back.
Go back to exhibit eight one.
And, and when you, when you look at the property, just trying to-
Take your microphone.
Make, make this a little bit easier, so I could see it. Um, you have the existing uses that are here today on, on the property, okay? And then behind th- those buildings, you have all this open lawn area, we have these various monuments and, and such that are on the property. So you don't wanna put something in, on the property here, right behind the main buildings, that really wouldn't make sense, especially for the use that we're asking for, that we're asking for the board here. Once you go past this, you're, you're down into the woods here, now you're taking yourself really far away from the parking that's on, that's on the property today. When you look at the property, this, this, when you look at where the nine eleven memorial is, there's some green space here, but there is some, there, there's also green space just to the west of it, and the reason why this spot was chosen was because the landscaping and trees that are around it, when you go out there and you stand there, you don't feel like you're by anything. So it really had a very calm, serene feel to it, and when we look at it compared to here, where now you're closer to all the activities that are going on with the building, it, it really made sense to put it there, given-
And then less trees there.
Well, yeah, this, this area was already generally cle, cleared, you know, it was lawn already, so it made sense. You know, to put it here, you're, you're, you're putting it next to a lot more activity, and we really want to get in a spot where it could be quieter and, and, and so people can be there and reflect on, on the reason. And, and that also too, it gives you nice access to the parking lot, so you're not in bringing people closer to the main, to the other buildings. They can come, park, you know, go there for a little while, get back in their car and leave, and they're, they're not inter, intermixing with other activities that are going on on the property.
When, when, um, it was asked what other areas were considered, you said you've got this big lawn area in the back uh, with some, I think statues and stuff, and you kinda said you wouldn't wanna put it here, and it wasn't because of other activity, I didn't hear the reason why.
Well, be, because you already have other things that are, you, you have uses that go on here already with the various statues, I, I would defer to Father on how they use that space, but generally speaking, th- there's, there's activity that goes on back here in that, that are related to the existing buildings. So you don't wanna introduce something else that, that wants to be in a space where it's quiet.
Being used for something else now?
Well, it's just, it's just part of the use of the property. And, and again, I would defer to Father on, on what goes on there, on a daily basis.
Uses in the back there?
Really, that's, that's just really for contemplative space, nothing more.
Like prayer stations, basically, where you, there's the statues?
Yes.
The, the survey also shows, uh, to the rear of the main chapel, in that open space is, um, is the septic disposal area.
Oh, you can't build there?
It is, it is somewhat, it's approximately located in-
There you go.
Center of that open clearing.
That's a good reason why you don't wanna put it there.
So don't kneel.
The septic field is right here.
Yeah, that would be a good reason why you don't wanna put it there.
But, but not, not so much for that, but it's for the other reasons that we talked about, you're right, you're also not gonna build it on top of the existing septic field.
You say the water here flows to the north and west, correct?
It flows, yes, it, the gradient is going down, down gradient in this direction, north, northwest.
Looks like three or four, uh, lots to the nor, to the, exactly, right there. Uh, are they currently inhabited?
Doesn't look like it.
Doesn't look like it to me.
No, there's, there's a, there's a large house on lot sixty-five, and there's another large house on lot sixty-four. Um, but they're, they're, they're a few hundred feet away, if not more.
So the water will not-
Yeah, the water will be dispersed already within, within the wooded areas that, that exist there before you even get to those lots. If, again, I, I, we don't have all the topography, we have the topography up to the property line, but I'm, I'm sure they have their own drainage on their own properties as well.
And that area just to the left of, uh, to, to the west of the columbarium, uh, is proposed, there's a small box there, is that a right-of-way that you're showing? Yes.
This here, this is a lot, this is the, this is the, the residents that, that live next door, this is lot sixty-six.
They're right there.
There's a house and a swimming pool right, right here, and there's another structure closer to Long Hill Road here, and then the rest of it back here is all, some of it's wooded, some of it's open space, I, I, you know, so I, I'm not sure what, what is back there beyond just, just being lawn or, or woods.
Yes.
What is back there, that looks like a lawn, that's where my leach field is.
Okay.
So it's, it's at least a hundred feet, if not more, from, from our development.
Okay, so taking what that lady just said about her leach field being back in there, show us exactly where's your pointer, when you go up, take your microphone. I think I say that more than any time. Um, just tell us exactly how the water runoff is gonna avoid her leach field, so we have that.
Besides the, the notion that if the leach field was constructed properly, there would be a diversion swell around it.
No, I understand that, but we can't, we can't assume anything about it.
But let's assume, let's assume it was. Generally, generally speaking, and I'm going back to the topography that's, that's shown on, um, my, my sheet two of seven in terms of the, the overall site topography that's there. And, and, and generally speaking, it, 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 it goes in, in, in this direction.
So it's actually going to go east of her leach?
It's going to go east a little, you know, again, you, you want to talk about it's perpendicular to the grade. So this liver in here is going to go this way. The rest is generally going to go in this direction. The drywells that are going here are going to divert, are going to point the water towards here, not towards, not towards the, the leach field.
Okay. So you've done, the way you've designed it to keep it away from the border of your property?
Correct. It's, it's so this way it doesn't go directly towards that area. It's going to follow the existing topography once it, if the drywalls, if the drywalls overflow.
Okay.
They're, they're designed to handle four inches of runoff.
Where does, have you noticed or can you tell from the, from the way the water goes or the way the, the land looks, where the water is going now with it not, with it not being developed?
It, it, there's a little bit of concentrated runoff that comes off the parking lot, generally in this area down here. It kind of runs down this gravel drive, but that's as far as the extent that I, that I can tell. But it's not, it's just, it's just a little concentrated flow. The rest of it she flows, I can't really, you can't see. If it concentrates itself, it's concentrating itself back in the woods.
You don't see any gullies or ruts or things that look like the water is making a, its own path?
Not, not through the area where we're putting this, no. It's, it's, it was maintained.
Or behind it for that matter.
I, I, right on the backside, I didn't see anything on the backside. I guess I didn't go all the way down in the woods, but generally right off, right off the edge of the lawn, I didn't see anything that says that we got concentrated flow.
So you don't see any issues now with water runoff onto, and to anybody else's property?
It, it, it doesn't appear that way.
And with the drywells, you anticipated being.
Slightly reduced, correct.
Uh, does our engineer or planner have a question for this witness?
I do not, looking at my letter.
Did you, did you address everything?
Went through each of the points.
Did he address everything in your letter?
Uh, yeah, I think my main questions would be regarding, would you stipulate as a condition of approval if the board were to approve this, that the statue couldn't exceed eight feet in height?
That statue is four feet, so you can hardly see really from, you can only see it from the parking lot.
Okay, so you.
I'm, I'm measuring it from, I'm measuring it from the ground, sitting on a platform, so I'm giving a total height.
Yeah, but the total height of a platform and statue would not exceed eight feet.
Six, six feet's good.
Six feet.
Six?
Six feet.
He said six.
Yeah, would you, yeah, eight feet.
Take eight, yeah, we'll give you eight. You're not going to see it anyway, we'll give you eight.
And, and the same thing.
From the tip of the head to the.
All right, other conditions that we've talked about, and I'm just curious if you would stipulate to them as, if this were approved, um, that there'd be no lighting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, and that.
Did you say that into the mic?
No, we don't have any problem with that.
Okay, and the same thing with that there'd be some sort of signage, maybe that it's only opened dawn to dusk?
Yes, correct.
And the only other issue, um, that I have is the plans didn't have any setbacks or height bulk reg- regulations on them that I received. And they, there should be some because this is a structure, so you should.
I can add that to the plan. The accessory setback requirements and then the height of the individual components, such as the columbarium and the statue. I can, if the board grants approval, I can do that as a, as a condition.
That would have to be something that would have to be on the final plan.
On there, not, not a problem.
Okay, those are, those are really my only questions right now.
Well, I, that's what I assumed. Um, any additional questions from board members of this witness? Are you, have any more?
I do want to point out one last thing. Um, we did receive Morris County Planning Board approval.
Okay.
And we did receive, um, Morris County Civil Conservation District approval. So those are the only outside agency approvals that we, um, we would need for the project.
And they've been, they've been okay?
Subject to the boards, you know, subject to the board approving it, um, we would be able to.
So there's no other hurdles besides?
Correct, correct. And then whatever process we'd have to go through with the engineering department for whatever building permits may be needed for it, we'd file at the appropriate time. And whatever pre-con meetings are required and boasting of inspection fees, things of that nature. I'm sure that'd be outlined in the, in an approving resolution if you were to grant it.
Yes. Okay, now I'm going to open it up to questions of this witness from the audience. And they have to be limited to questions dealing with his testimony. Do we have questions? Yes, come on up to the mic. Please state your name and address and your question, please.
I'm Brian Jimenez, I live at eleven twenty-two Long Hill Road.
Thank you.
Next to them. Can I show you a picture?
Uh, sure, if you have one. Oh, yeah, it's an exhibit. Do you have a question based on that? If your question is relating to that, then.
Yeah, it's about the drywall and.
Well, what is your question first before you show?
Here.
Yeah, come to the mic.
Yeah, yes.
Ask your question and then.
All right. So my question is, um, where my leach field is, right? It's going to be right adjacent from the one drywall in the corner. But my leach field drops another six feet off that driveway. Everything pitches that way and then it drops down even more. And it continues to drop down to Pleasant Plain Road.
Okay.
So I don't know if that's, that's been taken.
Question pertaining to how the runoff is going to affect it?
Yeah, they take that into consideration because he's saying, we don't know where it is, there's no.
All right, I understand what you're saying. That's why I asked the engineer about the current runoff. Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Have you experienced any adverse runoff from the way the property is now?
Yes.
You have?
Yeah, I have a, I have a picture here, you can see a rut in the stone from the way the water comes off the parking lot and goes to the back. And you can see where my, uh, leach field is in the back.
Okay.
Wait, are you north of the proposed site?
Yeah, would you show us your property on that?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Oh, you're that, you're that.
I'm right there.
Narrow strip of, okay.
So is, is that a flag lot then? There's two houses on that property there?
Yeah.
Are they owned by different people?
They're, we own, we own the whole property.
You own the whole property?
Yeah.
So you're with the woman that spoke earlier?
Yes, it's my mother. As my mother and my father. Yes. Yeah, my, my parents live in the back structure.
That's what I thought, okay.
And we live in the front structure.
I, would the engineer like to address that?
As I mentioned, I did not, you know, walk all the way down to, to the back. So if there is water ultimately concentrating towards, towards, towards the backside of the site here, I mean, I did not go all the way down back there. Um, and so it, it could be that there's, there, there, there could be something that's, that's, that's concentrating there, but we, we did not, I didn't go back there and look at that, so.
Well, what you're proposing now with this columbarium, will it make that worse or better?
It, it won't exacerbate it because we're adding the drywells to account for, for the, for the runoff. Um, what I can do in terms of that one drywall, and I'll go back to exhibit, hold on a second here. Exhibit A, A two.
Yeah.
Um, this, this drywall that's here, again, it was kind of pointing towards the contours. I mean, I can angle the discharge in a different direction.
That would probably be a good idea.
If that, if that, you know, helps. And so this way at least it's not, at, at least it gets a chance to go in a different route before it kind of turns back towards the property line. I have, I have no problem.
If you do all of that, including the collection of the water from the proposed site and the drywells and the outlet faced the other way, would you say that that could better his situation?
It, it, it's, it, it could improve it slightly, but it's not going to exacerbate it or make it any worse because we're, we're, you know, under the statute, it says, you know, four inches of runoff that's being collected. So the idea is to make sure you don't make it worse than what it's there. So by, by making some, by making some adjustments, we, we, we could try to push it the other way a little bit more, yes.
I heard the gentleman mention the parking lot runoff. How can you address that issue?
This is, what's hap, well, this is going to, this is going to collect some of that as it comes across now. Whereas before, it was coming off the parking lot and it was, it was just sheeting across. So what's going to happen now is we're going to have some collection there. So some of that parking lot runoff is going to get picked up and put into the drywells. Some of it, not, not all of it, it's just some of it. Because again, we can't pick up the whole parking lot because there's sections of it here. This gravel driveway's here. That's on, that's on our property.
Uh, wait.
So do we need to correct the runoff? I mean, I understand that you're putting in drywells to address what you're building, but if there's runoff already existing negatively impacting neighboring properties, is there something that you can do?
For the, for the parking lot?
For the parking lot while you're doing this?
Swales, anything like that?
Well, I mean, I could, I mean, the.
More drainage?
Yeah. I mean, the gravel drive is on our property. So it, it is, the, the erosion, you know, that he's pointing out is actually on our piece. Now, if that's a different gravel dri, if there's a different drive somewhere further down, that's, that's on, that's on your property, that's different. But it looks like from what he's saying, the gravel drive that he's talking about down here is, is on our, is on our property.
So there's two houses on the property, there's two driveways, are there two septic systems?
It's one septic system.
One septic system for two houses?
Does, does the gravel driveway on your side of the property serve any purpose? Is it used?
Uh, the one you mentioned?
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure as to the use of it.
Yeah, what?
We'd have to, I have to check.
Yes, that's the question is, could we eliminate the gravel driveway to make it more pervious coverage than it would absorb more of?
Oh, it's not a driveway they use for their house.
No.
It's on their property, so I don't know who uses it.
It's like a bridge, you gotta go to the front of it.
Is that, uh, you just conferred, I mean.
But is the gravel driveway considered impervious?
Yes, it is, yeah.
Kind of gets packed down.
We have pictures of mentioned that.
Okay, well, one, one second. Yeah, I know. You, you can, you all have a chance to do testimony. This is just questions and you brought up some valid points, so we're trying to address them.
So the gravel driveway that's there after conferring with the various entities here that we're involved with, it's not used for anything per se.
Okay, could that be eliminated?
We, we, we could eliminate it.
Pervious coverage there?
And if we, we could eliminate it, we could scarify it and, and eliminate it and turn it back into existing.
Nature, yeah.
Existing nature, yes. Let it just revert back to itself. But when you pull it up, you got to scarify it, so you get that, you get some, you get some infiltration back in the ground.
Right, right. And, and put dirt and grass or whatever, yeah.
Correct.
And you would say that that would improve some more, that would provide more drainage fr, between the two grounds?
And, and what we can do too is we can ensure that if, when we scarify it, we make sure that we, we get some stabilization in there so that there, so the rutting doesn't, doesn't occur.
And, and swell it so it stays on your, you know.
We, we could do that, yes.
So all the water would go into your property, not onto yours?
We could do that, yes. If we're going to go in and remove it, we could, we could do that.
Yeah, because you're going to be there anyway.
Yes. As just, as just, as, you know, uh, 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 it, it, as just a part of the, um, the removal of the gravel drive.
Right, I mean.
I mean, you're improving all this other area, why not improve that too?
Right. Yeah, that would.
But we'd want that to go, we'd want that to go back to, 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 to nature.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
With a slight swelling so it directs the water back into your property.
We could do that.
Because that would help with that runoff from the parking lot if it ran down that way. Because that's what I see happening now probably.
It, it is going towards this, this quadrant, yes.
Right, right.
We, we can do that.
Keep, yeah, I mean, that, that would probably improve greatly his, his predicament.
It, it, it would certainly help. Now, it only goes to a certain point.
Right.
So once you get back to, once you get to a certain point where it ends, that's just going to dissipate out.
Yeah, by that time it'll be more dissipate.
It'll be, it'll be past, it'll be past the columbarium generally to where my pointer is here on the plan. And I don't see the, the septic field is just off the page, uh, uh, up here.
Can you just go through the, on the aerial, the, um, go back, no, go back to your last one.
Oh, sure.
Along the property line, there's a structure adjacent to the, to the parking lot, right where your hand is?
That's the house.
That's, is that the front house?
That's, that's the back house.
That's the rear house, that's so, so the pool is south of that.
Pool is, is down here.
Okay, and then. Your house is in the front, so is that the, the northerly most structure on the property? That, that dwelling right there? Okay. Okay, and then the leach field is behind that.
It's, it's, it's back here.
It's another, it's pretty far back there. No, it's not. Okay.
It's not, it's not, it's not this, this area back here?
No, it's, it's.
It's, is it closer to the house?
We didn't look. That's my problem. I'm hearing all this.
But, but a swell and getting rid of that gravel driveway in their property would most likely keep the water from.
Minor, I'm, I'm nervous though because it's still a six foot drop down after that. And some of each field and it continues to, everything over here is a hill, it's all wood.
No, we're, we're.
I have seventy thousand dollars to redo this again.
Yeah, no, we, we're aware of that. That's why we're having that gravel driveway taken out and a swell put there to keep it on their property.
It doesn't sound like it was taken into account from the get-go when we do these projects, that's why I'm concerned.
Well, that's why we're here tonight to make sure.
I think the, the primary consideration is the, the setback to it, which is from the state regulation. For the fifty foot minimum setback from their infiltration structure to the location of the edge of the bed. That, that provides for the groundwater table to have the opportunity to level and not, not mound and influence directly. Then we're looking at the, the overlay and runoff to try to mitigate along that edge and benefit that further to the north to drain. So it doesn't drain over the area and then seep into your infiltration bed. So we, I think admittedly, we're dealing with this on the fly a little bit. Um, but, but we're putting a couple of measures into place here to be able to help.
And just knowing where the actual.
They're going above and beyond what the, what the regulations are, right? Regulations are fifty feet.
Correct, correct.
So you're going to go above and beyond what the regulations are to mitigate.
Well, let me ask you a question. What is happening now, is it affecting your leach field?
Nothing now, I don't know.
Okay, nothing, well, what, what we're trying, and I understand, what we're trying to do though, if there's nothing now and the parking lot is unrestricted as far as that gravel driveway and there's no swell, with, with the removal of the gravel driveway, a swell put in there, we're keeping it on their property, those, um, uh, drywells, we anticipate, hopefully we anticipate it being better for your situation. Because now we have means of keeping it, what's now going on your property will be now kept on their property. So that's why I wanted to know what was you recurring now. You said there is some e, e, erosion on your property?
Yeah, and I don't know whether they're going to put this stuff, but then it's awful. It's real close from that gravel driveway to our property. So I don't know if you're agreeing with me.
Well, that gravel driveway is going to be gone.
Well, I know, but I don't know if you're going to dig there, because it's going to drain.
No, no, there's no drains. They're going to get rid of that gravel, put dirt, swell a little bit so that your water goes back into their property. And it'll be like a little, like a little wall there, like a dirt wall, so that you don't have all that driveway, parking lot water going right across your border.
No, I understand that, but that little area, it's like a six foot drop right there. There's something getting machine, getting stuff back there, that's going to, that's my property.
We're not going to do any work on your, on your property.
Shouldn't.
The gravel drive is probably, it, it's at least ten feet off the property line.
Yeah, I looked about, about fifteen.
Yeah, they're going to, whatever they do can't disturb your property.
We will not go, we, we do not have to go on his property to do that work.
In, in regards to the northwest, um, corner right there where you're going to, no, no, the northwest corner of the, the grassland there, that's where you're putting the drywall?
Well, one drywall's going here and the other three are going over here.
Is that going to be part of phase one or will that not be?
That dry, that drywall will go in when we build phase two. So, so some of this development here is not even going to happen for a couple of years.
But the.
Would there be a consideration to put that drywall in before you build phase two as part of phase one?
It would, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be collecting anything.
Right, right now, the three drywells to the direct north are sized for the initial phase as well as portions of the future phases.
Okay.
So that, so essentially we, we have a code that requires a four foot, a four inch rainfall offset. We're offsetting into there nominally five plus at this time.
Okay.
And then once it's fully built out, everything will conform at four plus above, above our standard.
Would you consider removing the driveway as part of phase one's operation?
Well, they are going to.
Yeah, yes, we would do, yes. This, what, a couple, I guess to, to clarify a little, we'll, we'll put, we'll put the landscaping in over here, the four trees. We'll remove the driveway as part of phase one, we'll grade it, scarify it, slope it so that this way the water stays on the property. Um, and then that will be done as part of phase one.
Okay, which is something you don't have to do right now.
Correct, but we'll be willing to do that.
This is a good thing.
Yeah, because it'll also catch some of the existing parking lot runoff.
Correct, it will.
Which we haven't accounted for.
It, it will.
Which will better the homeowners' current situation.
It should, I mean, that's, that's part of the reason why, I mean, right now it's unfeathered. The water just goes where it wants to off the parking lot, basically. All right, any other, sir, we'll take, we'll, when it comes to the end, when we have testimony, we can look at your photographs and discuss it some more if you feel, I wanna adequately address your issue, believe me.
There are the dissonance.
Okay, no, no, that was excellent point.
Can I ask you a question?
Uh, yes, sir, come to the mic. Your name and address, please.
My name is Andre Jimenez and I live in the property, eleven twenty-two Long Hill.
Okay, well, we'll just say the address for the record.
Eleven twenty-two Long Hill.
Thank you, okay.
Okay, the gentleman, he was talking about building, the reason why they don't wanna build to another part of the shrine, the nine eleven, because there were statues. I think that might be the ideal place for them to have a place to sit in. I walk my dog every day and there is no structure or nothing. They could create a couple of trees and they could build this columbine, whatever you call that, build it going north. I have no problem. It will not interfere, you know, I would be all for it. Now, right next to, you know, right next to my house, where, you know, I live there, I got my grandkids, good neighbors, you know, I get, you know, everything is, you know, fucked into, we got all this later that they're gonna build this.
Okay.
And, you know, all of us.
But what is, I understand, so your question is, why could they not build it in another location?
Build it in a modern part. He's talking about, well, because this place is cheaper because it's.
I know, but I'm trying to form it into a question here.
I'll give you the question.
All right.
He's, he's taking the path of the river system. He's saying, well, I wanna build this over here because this is already flat. You need to consider that, you know what, you have all the options. The shrine is right here, if you go north, you got two statues, you can move the statue where people can kneel there and pray. There's not a problem, it's just two little, two statues there.
Okay.
You could build this, can I approach this?
Sure.
You could build, this is a, this is the shrine right here.
Right.
Build it right here. You know, playing, it's not gonna interfere with the seventy-six, the whatever, the gap. Build it there, it's not deceiving, and you could put all the trees you want and flowers. I'll give you a solution.
No, I understand that, sir, and I appreciate that.
I'm asking, so tell me what you know.
All right, so, okay, whatever, I understand your question, and I hope that he can address that.
Yeah, I'll go back to exhibit A1, which is what we can, which is what we're looking at before. There's space that, that is generally in this area here, but there's some trees there and there's some of the monuments that Father spoke about. So when we looked at the property, you know, we, we looked at the different locations and over here, you're closer to all the activities that are going on at the main building.
Right.
We wanted to have this in a location where it was gonna be.
Well, he was talking about more north of.
Well, if you go more nor, if you go, if you go more north, you're gonna remove more trees to construct that. Where we're putting it right now, the intent was to fit it into a space that was already sort of an open space, right, it was vacant. We concede, we have to take some trees out for the walkways. But we had a space here where the majority of the columbarium was gonna go, that we weren't clearing trees for that. That's why we chose this space here. And again, this is not a use where you have a lot of people coming all the time. It's a very serene and quiet use. We're not expecting it to have, you know, multiple people there during the course of the day. It's, it's, it's a very, you know, minimal use on the property. So, and by putting it here, it was a space that was already there. It felt right in terms of when you're on the property, when you're standing here, when you're in this space, it feels right for what we wanna propose here. That's why we chose that space. And I understand your, your close proximity, the house is over here, but the house is next to a parking lot. It's not next to the columbarium. Columbarium is further away from, from the house where it is in relation to the parking lot itself.
I'll ask you a question. You're worried, if you're concerned about the parking lot, when a person, when they're gonna, the people who's gonna visit the shrine, they can just keep walking. There's not a problem. You're talking about ten feet from the parking lot to walk to the nine eleven memorial. You could just keep walking another ten feet and then you could build this there and it would be fine. It's gonna cost you a little more money to do it, but I mean, you could zoom.
We got your question, thank you. We understand your question and we understand his answer. You wanna expand on it or?
I think I've kind of already touched on the reasons why this spot was chosen.
Let me just ask you, in that area where he's talking about, if you have the shrine for the nine eleven memorial and you go right, let's say, for the better word, behind it, but to the north of it, right there, you're saying there's more trees?
Well, there's, there's some trees there. I haven't, I haven't, you know, measured them.
What is in that area exactly?
It's, it's part of its wooded and part of its, is part of its grass and there, I think there's some monuments here already. You can see the white dots on the plan.
Yes, go ahead.
If that area was considered as an appropriate place to put it, would you be scarifying the gravel driveway, putting in a swale and putting in more ornamental trees close to the border?
No, if we, if we moved it to the other side, we wouldn't do any of that stuff.
Do we kind of establish that maybe it's this driveway and the drainage off the current parking lot that you're addressing with the location now that might improve their situation? And if there was a different location for it, then the dry wells wouldn't be there and the remediations that you plan in this current site wouldn't be done?
It certainly wouldn't have any, any slight reduction on runoff towards that property line. And we wouldn't be doing the driveway modifications that we, the gravel drive modification that we just talked about to help, you know, offset some of the concerns they have on their property. You wouldn't have to do that because you'd be on the other side now.
What, what was that, that reason for that gravel driveway originally? Does anybody, you know, Father? Do you know what the reason for that gravel driveway there?
Maintenance fire.
Okay, I was just curious, how long has it been there?
It's been there for all the years.
Okay.
There used to be a communications tower on that property, so.
Maybe that was access to that.
Could have been.
Okay, I was just curious as to the reason behind that.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
So in other words, it probably has no reason right now.
No one's using it right now for anything, yeah.
Well, that, you know, I, I understand the concern with moving it, but I think the fact that we're doing so many improvements to that area now because it's there, it may be more beneficial to neighbors, to, to the west and to the north and to the, you know, to the direction. Only because I think you're doing more water runoff mediation.
We're doing more control with where it's going now, as if, as if we were to move it someplace else. So, you know, considering where they put their septic field, and I'm not quite sure the location of it based on what I've heard, but certainly it sounds like it's somewhere on that western side of that property line. Anything that we do to reduce or mitigate runoff towards it is gonna be a benefit to them.
Yeah, whereas now it's just unfeathered, it goes right over their property line.
Correct, correct. And as I said before, the septic field should have its own diversion swell around it and everything. If it was just constructed in the last couple of years, it's requirement by code.
Right.
But nonetheless, we would do these additional improvements to further enhance it.
Off their property, right.
Correct.
Any additional questions by the board?
Okay.
Any questions by our experts based on what was just mentioned?
No.
Okay, just asking. All right, any additional testimony?
Sure, Mr. Rochelle, can I just ask you, do you think that this proposal would have any detrimental impact on the neighborhood from an engineering perspective?
No, it will not, based on what I've testified to this evening.
And do you think it would have any impairment on the zone plan from an engineering perspective?
Uh, no, it will not.
No further questions for me.
Any additional testimony by any other witnesses?
No.
All right, can, we're gonna take a ten-minute bathroom break and then we'll come back. Okay, we're back in session. We're back in session, guys. All right, now, we left off with the conclusion, I assume, of your testimony, of your.
Yes, we did have a question about the lighting. We were a little bit concerned about stairs. Could we do little lights on the stairs just so nobody trips?
Well, I understand. I, I don't have a problem with that. I was, I was wondering about lighting too as far as tripping. So if you put those, those kind of like movie lights that they have.
Okay, a little, okay.
Yeah, something so like embedded in the, in the stair, so it kind of like shines on the stair.
Rob, can we do that?
Yeah.
Well, does that.
Even if they wanted to, pathway lights, bother anybody? Because there's not, you're not projecting light off of the site, right? Like just to light the path.
You're talking about like the one-foot-high kind?
Yeah, like you got your own house, like landscape light, but not shine.
We can look in, yes.
Well, yeah, I would say, steps, at least on the steps, and maybe those.
Low voltage pathway lights, you call them? But low, low to the ground. You want the ones that are flush?
Or even flush, flush to the ground, yeah. Outline the path.
Does this, does this now then imply that, because we asked about dusk to dawn?
Yeah.
Does this imply that people will be there after dusk then? Is this inviting people then?
If anybody is, we don't want them to get hurt.
Well, no.
But if somebody's walking.
But if anybody is, they shouldn't be, kind of.
But it's, all right, let me put this way. You gotta account for cloudy days, days where it might get darker sooner. But we still want dawn to dusk, but this is just an added safety measure.
This covers you during those down-the-shoulder times when the sun's going down. The sun has gone down, but there's still some, there's still some light.
Yeah, first of all, we don't want people on the property before it gets light or after it gets dark for safety reasons, for security reasons and things like that, so.
And we'll have the signage as you requested.
But this is just, the lighting is just safety reasons.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that issue clarified, does any board member have any last minute questions before I opened it up to the public comment?
I, I, so Liz had written a letter that I'm sure you've seen and listed some of her planning comments. And I didn't know, I mean, I, I just spoke with her. I guess I could speak to them or you could just speak to them, but the main one is in her comment, I guess, number one, which takes up most of the comments, in terms of the D2 variance. And I assume that you're here to testify that you have had no substantial change to the mission or operation. Although, I, and I'm not saying I have any notion of what being essentially in the funeral business is, but it's a different business than what they're in now. I know it is a part and parcel sometimes of being a church. But at least in the hundred years that this has existed here, they have never been in the funeral business, correct?
That's correct.
And so there's a business plan, there's gotta be someone professional, I assume they have to hire, marketing, all these types of things that are not currently done as part of the church.
I think the intent is for current parishioners only, and then maybe at some point it would be expanded, but the purpose is not to extend it to everybody. It's only for parishioners right now.
And how many parishioners?
I'm sorry, Father, can you come back up?
I guess, how many parishioners are there? I don't know what, even what size of the.
Yes.
Yeah, just talk to me in the mic.
So for now, yes, we're just thinking of the people who are just with us.
And how many parishioners, how many, how many?
That's about four hundred.
So even if everybody signed up with you for this, you would, you wouldn't be able to fill the entirety of what you have currently, right now? Okay. And you'd mentioned something at the beginning, I don't, I don't know about your price structures or whatever, but is this, I think you said something about that the intent of this site originally was to serve migrants, et cetera, and to give them, I think you mentioned affordable or whatever. I, I think you'd mentioned that. I don't know how that, what that has to do, whether it means that you don't charge a high, a large amount to be a parishioner, or anything, obviously.
No, we don't charge.
Yeah, so is this in the scheme of the funeral type of business going to be on the low end in terms of cost comparatively to a similar type of structure?
Yes, yes, especially the burial of bodies.
Yeah, obviously that, but I'm saying in terms of other types of, equivalent things, are you,
Yeah, because we have places like Somerset Memorial in Bassington Ridge that has an indoor place that has like a little, yeah, and there, I assume it would be higher price.
So your intent to get into the funeral business is for your, it's not because you're looking to make additional money for, you know, it's not going to be almost like a fundraising type of thing. It will not, will this even pay for itself, I guess, is the question?
No.
Or will you have to provide additional funds on top of what you're, okay. It's not a, it's a loss leader or something, I guess, as they say in the business world.
So there's a charitable aspect of it as well, in terms of providing low-cost final place of rest?
No, we don't have that.
It's for the parishioners, is what he said earlier.
Yeah.
Right.
It's the parishioners.
Okay.
But it'll be an afford, your intent is to make it an affordable option for your parishioners? Because obviously they could choose to go elsewhere, they're not forced to do this. But it's in comparison to other similar types of sites, it's more affordable, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. I don't know if Liz had any other, I mean, that was my only...
Okay, well, thank you for bringing that up, that was good. Any other questions? Now, at this time, I'm going to open it up for comments to the public. And comments meaning if you have photographs or things you want to show us, besides questions. Do we have someone who wants to make comments or bring up some issues? And, you know, we were waiting with bated breath here, we wanted to see that. And just make sure you're talking, you have the mic in your hand when you're talking.
Could I just have your name and address?
Yeah, so it's Amber Jimenez, 1122 Long Hill Road in Sterling. So...
You can move the mic, you can take that mic out of there.
Okay, can I use that easel?
Sure, sure.
Okay. I just want to show you guys, we put together some pictures, because where they are proposing to build this calabrium is in a very secluded place of the shrine, which I understand they're saying is a peaceful area. But I would like the board to consider safety in terms of, because it's in such a secluded area, who's going to be monitoring this? And I know we're saying maybe put a sign from dawn to dusk, but...
No, that's definitely going on.
Okay, so, but if somebody does decide to show up to visit a loved one, say, ten o'clock at night, who's going to be there to really stop them? Who's really monitoring this?
Well, that would be the same for the nine eleven shrine, too. I mean, we have the same issue there, memorial. So I, that's a good question. We'll ask the applicant that.
Just trying to bring light to some areas that haven't, you know...
That really doesn't, that doesn't go so much to the location, because any location would have that issue, correct? Any location on the property would have the issue of somebody visiting it later.
That's true.
Or any part of town, anywhere in the world.
That's true.
Let's just mark that exhibit, if you could put O dash one and the date on...
Oh, sure.
Do we have a pen?
There, did you hand her a pen?
Okay, so...
Up in the, yeah, mark it before you keep speaking.
Okay, sure.
O dash one, and the date.
I'll have you sworn as well.
Yeah. Good, thank you.
When you're done with that, if you could raise your right hand.
Oh, sure.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but...
Which hand, I'm sorry?
Right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, you're under oath. And just could you confirm for the record that, did you take these photographs?
We did, I did.
You did?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and what date did you take them on?
We actually took them yesterday.
Okay.
It was, actually, they're on my phone, so they're dated. I took them on Sunday.
Okay.
So recently?
Recently, mm-hmm, yeah.
So that's an accurate picture of what you're depicting?
Yeah, so this is the rear dwelling on our property. And this is that gravel driveway that they were, we were speaking of before, that, so you can see how close the proximity is.
You're taking the picture from their property, correct?
This is from, right.
You're standing on their property, taking a picture of your house.
Yeah, where they're proposing to build this calabrium.
Okay.
In this picture.
Yeah, will there also be pictures from your house?
Yes, mm-hmm, yeah, so it's actually on the same, and I labeled them, the views from where the pictures are. So this group down here is from our backyard facing the area where they want to build it. And we marked them with these little blue stars. So you guys have, are more familiar with it.
What's that lower light in?
So these are showing the slope of the property, so you can get a better feel of it.
And what's that upper light in?
And then, so this is, this is the drive, this is the parking lot that's existing. And they have a donation box here that's very poorly maintained. People come and dump quite often. They did put a sign up, which is helpful, but it just kind of brings light that none of this area is really monitored. So there's garbage there, you can see in the picture, it actually looks nicer than usual, but any given, nobody really goes, the public doesn't ever really go back to this far corner of the property. So now that they're proposing to build this new structure, it's going to bring light to it. So I just want the board to really try to consider down the line, it's, this area is becoming available to the public. It's very secluded, just something to think about. I mean, I know it's supposed to be a peaceful place, but it could wind up being some type of hidden hideout down the line, like a hangout, just something to consider. I just, the pictures will show like how secluded the area is. And what else did I want? So there's also pictures here that shows from the inside of the rear dwelling, out of window, the view, where that structure will be built, so...
And those are the way the trees look at the current scene?
Yeah, this is how it is now. Yeah, so that area, the engineer was speaking of with the bamboo shrubbery, is really here. So where they're proposing is all the way this down, mm-hmm. So it's kind of looking up into our backyard.
So would it help by putting more, when they get rid of that gravel driveway, if they would so do that, and put it swell, would it also help to plant trees there?
Yeah, it probably would, it probably would help.
More of a shield?
I know, it seems like everyone who's represented here from the shrine is not sure what this gravel driveway is there for. Can we just make sure as a board it's not there for access in terms of emergency vehicles, or...
Well, it's going to be moved. We were thinking it possibly was...
But have we, have we thought about making sure that this new structure is accessible to fire trucks, EMT, ambulance, things like that?
There really shouldn't be anything that burns there, but...
Okay, I just want to make sure that's all being considered.
But the gravel driveway, we had a thought that perhaps that was access to some sort of antenna that was there at that time, which is no longer there.
That's in the, that's still there, it's in the front of that.
Right, well, that got moved, so...
Oh, okay.
So this gravel driveway is basically obsolete at this point.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
But what you're, what I gather you're saying, what I see from your picture there is that along with getting rid of the gravel driveway, swaling it on, for their property, the water, it might also help to put some buffering there as far as vegetation, trees.
Yeah, it could.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, it could.
You know, something that would block, because we can see your house pretty clear through there.
Oh, right, which is, you know, why we're so concerned. But, I mean, the other question I have is, I know we're saying they could plant the trees or green, the type of trees, or how is any of that, like, held accountable?
Oh, when they, okay, the process is, is whatever we agree upon tonight, if we in fact approve it, whatever they, we tell them they have to do, our experts and the town would monitor that. So before they've got their final approval, before they would get their final seal of signing off, they would have to make sure that their plans, first of all, would have to be modified to show what we want with those trees, or whatever they're going to do.
So if those plans have to be modified, then I can't see how anything can be approved tonight.
No, what we do is, the idea is approved, we leave it up to our engineer and our planner to work with the final plans. Once those final plans are done, they approve them based on our resolution and based on our conditions. And then they are signed off by the engineer and by Deborah and myself.
And those are available to the public.
Before anything gets built.
Can you just go through the process that, like you just said before, we create a resolution tonight? And then we memorialize it?
Right.
It's another meeting to make sure that everything that we said is in fact in that...
Right, the resolution would be drawn up by our attorneys. They in turn, it in turn encompasses the things that we tell them to do that are additional to what they were going to do. They in turn take their plans and modify them according to the resolution, which would mean showing that removal of that gravel driveway, the swale, the additional buffering of trees.
Type of, okay.
And things like that. Whatever we told them to do, they will put on those plans. Whatever's on those plans has to be built the way they're on the plan.
Okay.
So there is a check and balances here.
Okay, good, okay. I just want to show one other board that we put, I don't know if you want me to label it?
Yeah, if you could label it O dash two and put the date.
Okay, so we provided here our site plan, the survey of our property, so you can see exactly where our dwellings are. And their proposed area, here's the two-story dwelling, is going to be in this area adjacent here. Yeah, so this is Long Hill Road here, and this is our main house, and then this is the accessory dwelling house. So the area that we've been speaking of all night is right back in this area, just so the board can get an idea of proximity. And then this is an overview from Google, Google Maps of the shrine's whole property. You could see how much open space. I know we already talked about this, so we're not going to go back to it. There's the statues and things like that, and the stars, this is the nine eleven Remembrance Tower. So this is the area that they're proposing. Yeah, so just, just to give you guys, it's a really big property, and unless you're there all the time, where they're planning on putting this, you've probably never even been back in this little meadow area.
No, I'm familiar with it, but...
Yeah, just to give everyone a visual.
Do you have a swimming pool on your property?
We do, yeah.
How far is it from the property line you share with the neighbor?
I'm not sure. It should say it on this survey, but...
Do you think it's about the same distance that their proposed...
Like from, from the house to where they're planning on putting this calabrium?
From the property line that you share, your pool is, let's just say, twenty feet, thirty feet, fifty feet?
Oh.
Forty feet, okay.
Oh, okay.
And how far was the structure that they're building from the property line? Oh, it's further?
Yeah, further.
Okay.
No, sixteen feet from the shed.
From the shed, this is the house. It doesn't show the pool measurement.
All right, guys, you're not, you can't be heard on the record, so if you want to say something, come up and say it on the mic. Yeah, I would ask you, after you're done talking about those, I want each, we want to pass those around and look at them.
Yeah, yeah, of course, yeah.
Because I really can't see that survey at this distance.
Of course, yeah, yeah, mm-hmm, yeah.
But I would think it would behoove every board member to look at what you're showing us.
Yeah, and this survey is when we bought the house in 2017, so...
Has anything changed since then?
No.
Okay.
Nothing has changed, yeah, yeah.
Everything that's on that survey is the way it is now?
Yes, mm-hmm.
And is there any other photographs you have?
Except the fence, this fence is no longer here.
Oh, okay, but that's on the others?
That's like in the grassy area, mm-hmm. It's marked on there, but it's no longer there.
Aside from the fence, everything else is?
Yes.
There's no other additional structures, structures haven't been removed?
No.
Are there any other photographs besides what you're showing us?
No.
Okay.
Wasn't, weren't there some, I guess your husband had some photos of some water dam?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Do you want to present those?
They're not on the board, though.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, sure.
We'd like to see them, too.
Whereas, do you have it with you still? Oh, yeah, so this picture...
Did you mark them on the back, O three, O four, or whatever?
Yeah.
How many are there?
You could...
Just two.
Okay, then mark it O three and O four.
Sure. With the date, right?
And the date, yes, please.
Okay. Okay, so you can see here, this is that gravel driveway.
Yes.
Oh, it's on the other board, but, so our leach field is back here. See, there's this fence that's been, it's not even a fence, I'm not sure what it is, it's been there since we bought the property. Our leach field is adjacent to that, so you can see this gravel area.
Right.
There is quite a bit of a ditch there that just somehow naturally formed.
And that's their gravel driveway?
This is their gravel driveway, yeah, yeah.
So there is an indication that you have a stream of water going in that area?
Right, because everything's pitched down, down, so...
That's true.
You can, you know, you... The parking lots up here, long hill roads all the way up here, so everything pitches down.
Right, okay. So by getting rid of that gravel driveway, putting the swale in and putting some buffering of trees, of bushes, that would eliminate a lot of that water that would be going down there? Or at least stop it, or...
Okay, okay.
I'm asking you, do you think that would be the case on your property?
To be honest, I'm not sure how that works, so...
Okay, well, we've, we have used swales and pitches of property to purposely keep water off other people's property.
Okay.
It's one of the, I mean, our planner and engineer will tell you that that does work.
Mm-hmm.
It's one of the measures we have.
Okay. Okay, mm-hmm, okay. And then the other picture that we labeled O three is of the actual leach field in our, in the back of the property. You'll see it on the survey, so that's all that picture is.
And that's standing where, looking where?
So this is standing from, from where they're proposing to build the calabrium, looking down.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And I think your husband had mentioned before, that's, you'd say that's a six from where you're standing there to looking down to where three hundred, that's about six feet?
Ryan said about six feet, mm-hmm, yeah.
I mean, is that, can we confirm that from there?
Do we have a topo on that?
Do we know that?
Do we have anything that we could look at that?
Looks like topography cuts off pretty immediately after you cross the property line?
All right, is that a topographic survey?
There is a bit of an existing swale between the property line and the existing gravel drive.
Okay.
So any of those improvements we discussed earlier would essentially be tying into that?
Okay.
To improve that area?
Improving that, and making it more, accentuate it, basically, so it does better job.
Yes, there's a contouring, pushing back from the property about seven feet or so into the property, off the property line, back into a swale that would then travel directly north.
Okay, and stay as much as possible off the westerly property.
Right, so then removing the gravel drive, as discussed earlier, would afford the opportunity to move the center line further away from the property line.
Okay.
For that swale to just be promoted away from the property line and straight back parallel.
And do you see room to put trees or bushes or something to block the view?
Yeah, so there's, and the final phase is approximately ten to eleven feet from the easterly edge of the existing gravel drive to the wall of the improvement.
So you could put something in there?
You've got, yeah, you've got a gap of space there that both can be accommodated.
About fifteen feet?
Probably north of thirty.
Really, thirty, okay, so there's quite a bit of room there.
In terms of, yeah, room to look to supplement planting for screening and address the drainage.
Okay, good, that's always good, there's room there, okay.
The other two last things is, I just hope the board would consider that there are other, there is another calabrium, calabrium, sorry, in the town, St. Vincent's Cemetery, or I believe it's St. Vincent's Church Cemetery.
At Candyville Street.
They have one there, so not sure if the town really needs another one. I'm just asking just for consideration. And then the last thing is, it seems very clear after their presentation that this is being done in phases, and it's going to move on after phase one if, seems like if they sell a certain amount, then they'll move on. So I just hope the board considers how are we prepared for it to sit a certain way after phase one? Or do we have a timeline on that? It's just something to consider, it could sit a certain way.
The testimony that we're getting here today, case in consideration, the whole thing being built, so...
Right, but I'm saying in the after, in reality, they're saying they're going to start with phase... Right. But I'm saying in the after, in reality, they're saying they're gonna start with phase one. So just consider phase one to get the time it could take to get from phase one to phase two could be a number, amount of years and, and do we want it?
That it's gonna look unfinished, or what, what?
Yeah, I mean, is it gonna just sit a certain way?
Actually, what we're gonna do, what they, what the testimony I, I believe I heard was, the area that's un, that's not gonna be finished is gonna remain grass. But that's not gonna stop them from getting rid of the gravel driveway, putting a swale, putting additional blocking.
Just something to consider. I don't wanna see a project start in.
And then you'll have the finished, and then when that grass gets done, it'll, it'll
Okay.
be closer, but everything else will really have grown in by then.
Okay.
So we're hoping that by the time this, whatever you wanna call it, phase goes in, the last phase, those barriers of trees and, and bushes will have grown up so that that won't be noticed by anyone looking at it.
Just something to consider. I mean, we can all hope for a lot of things, and reality could be, it could be sitting, you know, for
Well, part of the obligation.
Still at phase one.
Part of the obligation of the applicant is when they put these trees and bushes and, uh, they have to maintain them. So when we, when we ask them to construct something, uh, get rid of, get rid of this, this gravel driveway, put a swale in, put some, some trees and bushes in, that obligates them to maintain that area.
Okay.
So they can't destroy the swale at some time, or they, they can't take down those trees and bushes. Or if one dies, they have to replant it. So there, there's an obligation there to maintain that.
So then that'll, that'll leave me with my closing thought. I highly encourage everyone here on the board to take a walk through at the shrine to see, you're saying, maintaining, but there's quite a few areas that have not been maintained. There's garbage, like I said, in the, this donation box, people just dump. They put furniture, they, there's, the, the landscape the past at least year has not been upkept like it usually is.
What kind of box is that?
It's a clothing donation box, but people leave, yeah, mm-hmm. And they did put a sign up, um, that says, please do not dump, but they've leave food. There's been food left back there.
Okay, that's not good.
So, I mean, like I said, it's kind of a hidden area that, it's beautiful and it is peaceful. I, I'm just saying, you know, there's a lot that can be seen that, uh, maybe needs to come to light in terms of maintenance.
Okay, well.
So, maybe we can, they, even the condition of, of the drive, of the parking lot itself, I mean, maybe instead of trying to build something, maybe ta- repair what's already there.
Going beyond our
I'm just, just.
I, I can understand your concern, and we can, we can help by, by emphasizing to the applicant that perhaps they should monitor that box a little more.
Yeah.
Because that is in, in conju- that is in close proximity to this structure.
Right.
Uh, so we'll make that, uh, a, I can't put it as a condition, but I can make that as a strong suggestion.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we don't, we, we don't want that to take away from what they're building there.
I'm, I'm just trying to bring to light if they can already take care of what's existing.
Address these concerns with the people at the shrine and on other occasions?
Uh, we have.
You have?
Yeah.
No results from that?
We've talked to them, we, no?
Yes. Uh, would you come up and take the mic? We do want it on the record.
And, and we have to swear you in.
Yeah, you have to swear you in. Good, we swear you in. You have to be sworn in, sir.
Can you raise your right hand?
Oh.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
All right, you're under oath.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I spoke with one of the, the gentleman, he drives the golf, the golf car. Uh, the, the drop-off box, it used to be in the front of the, by the shrine. And for some reason, they moved it right in, almost in front of my window, where my wife sleeps.
Okay.
So the people, they constantly, in the middle of the night, they come people, all, all hours of the night, dropping stuff.
Okay.
And it's been a nuisance, and after that, I spoke with the gentleman once, and after that, I never, I never brought it up back again because he wasn't gonna get back to me.
Okay.
He never did, so I just left it alone.
Well, there's, there's codes that every property owner in the town is required to follow, which I'm sure that
I, I could, I, I would like to make a suggestion, if the applicant would be willing to, because it, I, it isn't part of this application. But part of this, i- if you feel that it might improve your public relations to the neighbors, could you move that collection box somewhere away from their property? Okay, because it is a nuisance if people are banging that thing in the middle of the night.
I, I agree with you. I think it's on a best efforts basis, because I've read and heard and been involved in when they try to move those kinda boxes, there's objection to wherever they wanna put them.
Well.
Saying, so like, I don't wanna make stipulation.
But move it away from a neighbor. Put it closer to your property.
Somebody else, or.
But where it was, was at the front of the property where there was no.
No neighbor.
Yeah, there's no neighbor.
We wanna keep it away from the neighbors.
Do you know why it was moved?
Yeah, you have an idea why it was moved?
We moved it because the cars that were, were coming in, that, they were on the way.
Okay. All right, could you maybe find a spot that would be more?
There were two spaces, and they wanted to save the, like, the spaces there, and that's why they moved it. As the gentleman, he says the person that comes in the truck to, to pick up the donations, he'll be able to, like, move it, because I asked him, I'll move it myself, you know, I will help you move if you want to.
You need, you need a forklift or a backhoe.
We got one. But I, you know, I was waiting to work with them, because they never, then, for some reason, they just brought over here. None of it was said to any of us, and I, you know, kinda like.
I understand. Well, we're, we're trying to address that, and.
I appreciate it, no, I appreciate it.
Uh, you know, this may not be directly related, but it is an issue, and we, and we wanna, we wanna eliminate issues.
We wanna big old neighbors.
All right.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, besides what you've told us,
Yeah.
and you've shown us on the photographs, which I, I definitely wanna, want you to give to us, so we can look at.
Sure.
Is there anything else you wanna add?
Uh, the, the last thing, it just came up when we were just talking about that. Um, I know they're saying there shouldn't be interruptions with parking and traffic and things like that, but I do want to make it aware that there are some Sundays and Saturdays that there, that parking lot has been so crowded, cars, buses come, and there's so many that they have flaggers to, to have traffic to get the cars to get out of the parking lot safely. So just, again, something to consider. I know they're saying maybe, you know, one or two people may come to visit their, their loved one. How do you know that? One or two, what if?
I understand what you're saying, but that, we can't speculate.
Right. It's just, again, something to consider, that's all.
I understand. I mean, we can't address these issues because they're unrelated, but I understand what you mean by traffic.
Right.
And the testimony we've heard has indicated to us
This project will just.
That much addition.
Right. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but this project will just bring more, you know, more traffic, more people coming, and say they do have eight hundred niches, you know, they are successful eventually. Two people, even if half the people come, one person to visit at one time, that's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of cars.
It's my take.
And how do you not know that they're not gonna come during a mass? You can't prevent, you can't say, you can't come visit your loved one during a mass.
No, I.
So, just something to consider, that's all. And thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Could you hand us those?
Sure.
Oh, sure. Can we, well, first, while you're asking the questions, are you, do you, you have anything to do with the photographs, or?
Uh, no, I'll say.
Okay, can we start looking at those while she's asking the questions, because start them down there. Yeah, and then we'll work our way down. But go ahead, the, the attorney would like to ask you a question.
Have you had any issues since the nine eleven memorial was installed?
No, I haven't.
People might come on your site. Have you had any problems with that before?
Uh, we have had a couple, um, some people wander over and they apologize, you know, when we confront, I was so sorry, we didn't know that this is part of your, your, you know, your private property, because there's no division, so it, especially now where this is, it's even closer. So they're not gonna know that unless, you know, they're not gonna know where, where to, where they can and stop walking around the garden.
Right. And just so you know, our goal is not to make it ugly or anything like that. We wanna make it very pretty, and we're not gonna have an unfinished project. We're going to finish each phase and it will look nice. I mean, we wanna look pretty, just like you do, because it is our property too, and our parishioners deserve a nice place to worship and
Okay, I appreciate that.
So our goal is to make it as nice as possible.
Yeah, um, you know, one more question for the board, uh, or everybody here is, have the nine eleven memorial families been notified of this, uh, being built so adjacent to?
What are the nine eleven memorial?
I, I mean, I just.
No, but there's really, there's no, there's no real.
You're kinda sharing, you're, yeah, but.
It's a memorial honoring.
You're sharing their space now.
It really isn't.
Okay, that's it.
Can I follow up with that? Is, has there been, I mean, you know, one or two people have walked onto your property?
Mm-hmm.
But has there been any consideration of creating some sort of, like, obviously, a fence is maybe the only thing that would delineate the difference? Well, they could as well, but we can't, we can't force the property owner next door to, but was there ever?
If they don't want the intrusion, then they could.
Under, understood, but we, you know, I'm just asking the question, has there been any consideration on, on the shrine's part to put up a fence in between the properties to delineate where the property line? No, there hasn't been, okay.
Is it something that you would consider? Yeah.
Okay.
So if, uh, it was something that we, I don't know, how do you make that a condition? You don't know if you wanna stipulate.
Yeah, they, are you guys, is the board just saying?
Harbor Vitae, that's a natural barrier.
Right.
The ba- the barriers.
The landscaping.
I think that's gonna be pretty obvious.
Right, we're gonna have the landscape.
It looks like there already is some sort of little fence in between your properties.
Not like that, but it's a wood area. It's like fifty feet.
It's like a wire fence. It, it's been there since we bought the house, with like, uh.
Why are we having a fence put there?
We're not. We're asking them if they would be willing to. That was it.
They're gonna do whatever you want, 'cause they wanna get their project through, obviously, so.
Right, but our premise is not put a fence.
It's, it's, and it's gonna be ugly. It's gonna just.
Yeah, I'm not, I understand what you're saying, Jerry. We just wanna make sure that visibly there's some, there's a natural separation and water runoff is on.
Not only natural, but we're actually putting it, we're delineating right now. We're putting a swale and we're putting trees.
Yeah, which, which will help delineate people.
In addition to an existing fifty-foot wide wooded area.
Yeah, but the, from what I can see here, yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, no, I, and, yes, I, I mean, I, I think.
Reason, I think. I don't normally speak up. I, I like screening, you know, you know I love.
Yeah, I know, that's why.
But, but this is beyond reason. It's, it's not reasonable.
No, uh, uh, are you saying that when we're asking the swale and the additional thing, that is reasonable?
That's reasonable.
Okay.
Cause it, it has a, it has a, it has a sense of purpose, but.
That, that's fine, I understand.
Area, like, you know, much.
The question was just whether they'd consider, ever considered it themselves. I'm not saying they were requiring it.
But if the, if the, if the neighbor isn't happy with intrusion, then they can consider.
Very well.
Right. All right, um.
And no further questions.
Okay.
Um, now, um, after we've looked at these, I'm gonna ask if any mem- any, uh, a board member has a question pertaining to these photographs, since we couldn't really see them that well
Right.
over there, so.
Okay.
Uh, just hold on a second.
Sure.
I mean, uh, we might not, but who knows? Just wanna make sure that we're looking at everything here. Yeah, sure. There's another thing you might wanna look at. Okay, uh, the board members have all had an opportunity to look at the photos?
Yes.
You have any questions about these photos to the witness?
None about those photos.
Okay. All right, the applicant's looking at them, so we'll see if they have any questions.
Appreciate it.
Did you, you guys wanna look at those? Okay, all right. Just wanna make sure, 'cause I don't wanna leak it out. Cause I couldn't see it, in this distance. All right, do you, does anyone, uh, in relation to the applicant have a question about these photos?
No, we do not.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
I guess, uh, did you, uh, have any photographs of the area before the, uh, the tower was there for nine eleven?
We didn't live there then.
Okay. Well, I guess of the property owners, that, that before the tower was there, what was that area like?
Before the memorial, nine eleven memorial tower, what was in that location before the memorial was built?
It does estimate.
It was just nature, okay. Grass, trees.
And, and was it unkept then, or was, you know, it was natural? So now, now that it's got the.
It was almost kept.
So now that it's got this other, uh, you know, memorial place for remembrance, uh, is it maintained and kept in better condition than it was?
Yes, it is.
So, okay, okay.
And as I mentioned, we wanna keep this very attractive site anyway, because we want our parishioners to enjoy the site. It's a time to remember your loved ones.
I guess where I was going is now that this is gonna be a developed, if this was gonna be a developed area, uh, it would be maintained differently, just as the other site was different, and now it's maintained differently.
That may be another reason to move that collection box, 'cause that's gonna be right near the entrance to it. You know, you wanna get that, rid of that eyesore next to this area too.
Yeah, we will look into Maria Claus.
We will look into that, because, uh, the traffic.
No, I understand, but there's other locations you could possibly put it. Is that one of those things where they pay you so much a, a month to have it there?
No, this Catholic charity, they, they just.
Okay.
It's a collection.
Is there any way that you, if wherever you move it, could you put a surveillance camera on it to make sure that people aren't dumping garbage and things like that?
I don't know how we would enforce that, though, 'cause even if we get a picture.
No, you could say, you know, this, this area is, is monitored, because these boxes do tend to attract things that you don't want them to attract, and especially if it's secluded off the road, nobody sees it. Just by putting a, a camera there and saying this, this area is, is mo- being monitored, do not dump anything but clothing, may, may further, uh, deter people from doing that. And if you put it closer to an area where the camera would be mounted, you might get a less of gar- that would be less of a burden on you to keep cleaning it up. So, I mean, uh, uh, just a suggestion.
Actually, Catholic charities owns those bins. They come and collect them every Monday.
But who takes care of the garbage that's put there that they don't collect? You have to take care of that. I, I know, that's, that's what I mean. It's more of a burden on you. Somebody throws food, garbage, things that, that they don't take. They're not gonna clean that for you, right? Okay. See, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out a way to reduce your burden.
I would recommend that they go to the town. If it's, if the shrine isn't cleaning this up, which I don't, I don't see that. I go there. I, I haven't seen garbage. But if, if you go there and you see garbage, you should complain to the town.
Right. Well, I, I'm just trying to give them a suggestion of how to prevent that.
It seems like we're going above and beyond.
No, no, I, I understand.
For, unrelated to their application, all this stuff is not.
It is, it is tangentially related, because it is near that property, and it's near what they're building, and it's, it's something that if we can clean up now and address now, it's, it's an issue. I don't wanna ignore it, in other words. I understand what you're saying, um, but it, it is a concern of the neighbors, and it is something that is within that area that they're building.
I think we've done a tremendous job of validating the neighbors' concerns.
No, and, and I commend the neighbors for bringing up the issue, because we didn't, we were not. No, and, and I commend the neighbors for bringing up the issue because we didn't, we were not totally aware of the issue with their gravel driveway being such a issue with runoff. And we weren't aware of the issue with your property. So, thank you for bringing it up because it does help us and the applicant ma- build a better look, build it better and make it less obtrusive to you.
And we do have a code enforcement officer.
Yes, yes we do.
So.
Yeah.
Okay.
And he's very good. He catches everything.
He does.
He really does.
Yes, he does.
That's good to know.
I think he's, he, out of all the ones that we've ever had, he catches everything.
That's good.
Um, alright.
Things that he can see anyway. He doesn't trespass. Let's put it that way.
No, no. But, um, alright, is there anything else you want to tell us?
That's it. Thank you.
You will. Now, I don't, I, I'm not saying that we're done with the public because she went, but is there anyone else that wants to make a comment, positive or negative? Wants to ma- address the board with their either concerns or, uh, suggestions or comments about this project? No? Okay. Sir, come on up. You're still under oath.
Okay, no, I'm just gonna, I hope you indulge me. Uh, just, just think about it. We don't have to do anything tonight. This is not a do or die situation that this has to be built, uh, immediately. There might be other options that they, they could be done, that they could, that they could, you could take. Right, because you have to be mindful that, you know what, it doesn't affect nobody else's life. My life is, is going to affect my life.
Well, we're trying to make sure it doesn't.
And I don't, and I, you know, you understand that, you know what, you, you also, I will, I was going to say one more thing. I have my two, my two grandchildren right here. I watch them twenty-four and seven. And if that parking lot, they should, I, I, I think they should, they should put a gate that they could close at this eight o'clock, whenever there's no, no, nobody else going to church. They should close it because that's an op- open space. And you see people park there twenty-four and seven. You don't know who they are.
Sir, those type of concerns should be brought up either to the police department or the town enforcement because they don't want that either. I'm sure the applicant doesn't like that either. And I'm sure they don't want people using their driveway or parking lot for twenty-four hour service. That really does go beyond our.
Okay, no, that, I, I understand. Alright, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay.
Alright. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to close it to the public. Would you like to make a closing statement?
Sure, I won't belabor the point, but I think you heard that we do have a public interest at stake. It's the burial of human remains, remains if you will. And we just want to provide a place for loved ones to gather and mourn and celebrate their loved ones. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. And as you heard from Mr. Michelle, we don't believe there will be any detrimental impact. We did stipulate to a number of conditions that will mitigate any detrimental impact that could result from our project. And we think that on balance, allowing individuals to come here and mourn and celebrate their loved one is a better outcome than not allowing that. And we think it will have minimal detriment on the neighborhood, particularly given our stipulated two conditions.
Okay. Of which there is taking up the gravel, putting the swell, putting additional natural barriers for sight
Right.
And sound.
The signage.
Right.
Any pre-construction meetings, any fees. We will change the drywell angle slightly to better accommodate the runoff. Like you said, we will eliminate the gravel as part of phase one. We will also add stabilization and a swell adjacent to the property line.
And trees and bushes.
Correct. We will do the arborvitae. The landscaping will be done as part of phase one. We will look into.
Subject to the approval of our experts.
Certainly. And we will look into moving the donation box and we will, if everyone's okay with it, be installing little lights just to keep the pathways safe. And we did stipulate to the maximum height of the statue being eight feet.
From floor, from base to top.
Correct.
And I'm not sure if you said adding the bulk regulations to the site plan?
Yes, we will revise the plans.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, that's a technical.
I think that was everything that we stipulated too.
Okay.
So, yes, we are just requesting that you approve our application. Again, this is for a D two because we are a church and churches are not permitted in the C zone. So, as the board found previously, we would hope that you find us inherently beneficial again and you would grant our requested relief.
Thank you. Uh, Jessica, would you like to start the deliberations?
So, I really appreciate your testimony. It was very helpful, that of your adhere and also, um, the comments and the information provided by the public. I, I find that consistent with prior boards, um, findings that the site continues to be inherently beneficial use. I don't think that there's been a change. And I don't think that this use, um, changes the determination there. That said, going into, you know, the, the public interest and the potential detriment, I do think that there are some potential detriments, but with what we've done here today, we've mitigated those. And so, I do think that, um, based on the inherently beneficial use, the mitigation of any detriments that the benefits outweigh the detriments and I'm for the application.
Thank you. Gary?
I think that, uh, it was really helpful to have the public and the neighbors come and talk about what they're experiencing at the property. And it sounds like, uh, the neighbors who want this development to happen, it, in my opinion, it's a little bit of an expansion of their, their use that they're, I was thinking of the variance on, I believe, right? And it's a slight change from what you're already using the property for, but as you indicated, this is kind of something that had been in an original kind of plan for things. And I think you've gone through some great lengths with a lot of suggestions from everyone as to how to mitigate any damages or detriment that it might be doing to the neighbors' property. And, and that you think we've kind of done a round, round on it. And generally, I'm in favor of the application.
Jonathan?
Yeah, I don't want to, there's nothing much, too much to add, uh, obviously with, uh, just appreciate your coming here and spending the time and definitely for the public as well for, and for their children for staying up so late for this. Appreciate that as well. I think that, uh, you've shown that, uh, you meet the inherently benefi- beneficial use and I, I don't believe this has changed. And I think that in terms of all the additional items that have already been spoken to, I would be supportive of this application.
Tom?
I also really appreciate the public coming and speaking here tonight. Not only the testimony, but the pictures were very, very helpful. And thank you for taking the time.
Tom, microphone?
Yeah, go close.
Let me repeat that, I'm sorry. I want to thank again the public for coming here tonight and, uh, making their presentation, not only the testimony, but I found the pictures to be very helpful. And thank you. This is a C zone, a variance for a C zone, but again, a church is a, is a beneficial, inherently beneficial use. And I think we're just, uh, ex- expanding that a wee bit to allow for something that's very, very inherent in terms of what, uh, Catholic parishes and, and parishioners would like to have as part of their, um, services. So, I think that's a plus. In terms of the impact on the environment, I think there's just two. One is the additional, uh, citizens coming on board to, to spend time with their deceased loved ones. I think those of us who have spent time in cemeteries know that we can expect very few people, uh, during the course of the year to be, uh, intruding into this, not intruding, but coming upon this area. And secondly, in terms of all the effort that's being done to, uh, put in the drywells or changing the direction of the drywells, putting in the swell, removing the gravel road, it sounds to me like, uh, the, uh, impact on the neighbors will actually be less than it currently is. So, uh, for all of those reasons, I vote to approve the application.
Thank you. Meredith?
Okay. Well, the first thing I was going to say is I really appreciate being able to look at these plans. It's, it's, you know, obviously a lot of detail, a lot of planning has gone into, you know, what you plan to put up in this, a nice serene and loving, um, commemoration of the living and the dead. I think too that, um, the benefit of having this open hearing too is people from the public are able to come and, and, uh, you know, voice their opinion with the benefits or the potential detriments as well. And the best part about them coming is you're able to really come together and, and come up with a plan to, you know, offset some of those potential detriments. And you've been so open and so receptive to that. Um, a lot of, uh, thought has been put into, um, you know, how we can make bet- make improvements to that so that, um, you know, so that nobody's affected by it, um, especially neighbors. So, um, I believe that the, any potential detriment to this is, uh, outweighed drastically by the benefits and I would approve of, uh, this application.
Jerry?
Well, um, I, I'm not going to add too much. I think my colleagues have said most everything already. But I do want to thank you for a, a great application. And I think, um, as an applicant, you did a great job of accommodating the concerns of not only this board, our professionals, but also of your neighbor directly to the west. And it's been mentioned, the swell, the redirection of the water, uh, the outlet from the, uh, collection system. You've done a lot. I mean, the, the removal of the, of the stone road. You've actually done everything that was asked of you. Um, so I want to thank you for that. Of course, I think that, uh, adding the columbarium is definitely consistent with what you would, uh, find the services that a church would normally perform. So, to me, there's no change in the use uh, the way I, the way I see that. And it's definitely an inherently beneficial use. This is definitely community serving. It serves the public interest. I don't see any detriment. I see an improvement over the whole situation there with the water collection, which doesn't exist right now. It's going to pick up some of the water from the parking lot that's right now running sheeting across the neighbor's lawn. Um, it's going to take that and redirect it where it doesn't hurt anybody. So, overall, it's a, it's a benefit, uh, to the situation there. So, I'm in favor of this application.
Thank you. Tom?
Thank you all for coming tonight. I want to thank Dr., uh, Father Moreno and also the family from eleven twenty-two, is that correct? Long Hill Road, for coming. And, uh, it was very, I don't want to say entertaining, but enlightening to, uh, hear from the neighbors of the, uh, of the church about the water runoff. And it was also very inspiring that there was no hem, no ha. Sure, we'll put in, we'll put in a berm or a swell, whatever you want to call it. So, the positive nature of how this was responded to goes to the positive. The positive does outweigh the negative, I believe. Uh, the columbarium is for the less affluent and local parishioners of your church. So, it is a positive for our township. And a problem that wasn't even addressed in this application is being eliminated to the benefit of your neighbors. So, all in all, as everybody else has also said, that the positives outweigh the negatives and I'm very much in favor of this application.
Thank you, Tom. I, I concur with my colleagues that have discussed this, uh, in length. I do believe that the, uh, positive, uh, criteria outweigh the negative. And, uh, the, even though it's not a permitted use, it's out, it's out, uh, it, it was there prior to any permitted use being non-permitted or permitted. And I do believe this is a nice extension of what a church does. It provides things like this for the parishioners, either in the form of a cemetery or in the form of this type of structure. I believe that, uh, you have bent over backwards and really have gone the extra mile to try to accommodate your neighbors', um, concerns, which were valid. And I appreciate them bringing them forward because it brought some things to light that we were not totally aware of because we don't live there. For them to at least take the time to take those photographs is very good because we could see and you, and the applicant can see things that you don't always look at or you don't always notice when you're there. So, um, I, you know, do believe that there was a well-presented application. I thank the, the audience for their participation and I would be in favor of this. Thank you. So, do I have a resolution?
I'll move it.
Motion, yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay.
I'm sorry, who was the second? Mr. Rodeo?
Yes.
Or Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Ms. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Gene Hockes?
Yes.
Mr. Flatley?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Chairman Gurek?
Yes.
Machine carries.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you.
Congratulate everyone.
Yeah, she's going to hold on.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you as well.
I think every, every question.
Do we have a motion to adjourn or?
Oh, yeah. Guys, uh, I'm sorry, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.